Yeah.
I'd forgotten about that. We have great. Crazy.
Crazy.
For a little while. So we're going in, I thought they'd agree to maybe I shouldn't read Facebook.
Okay, we are ready to get started. Welcome everyone to our annual council goal setting session. We used to call these retreat, but everyone used to think we were going somewhere and we don't go anywhere. So we just call it goal. Goal setting session now, so.
Advance, we're advancing.
We're advancing forward. Yes. So um, I promise I'm not going to take ten or fifteen minutes here as the schedule says, but just a couple of things. The uh, we had a great conversation on Wednesday, so I got to hear a lot about some of the things that people are thinking about. We have, you know, last four or five years, we've had a really. We've done a really good job of setting goals and objectives. I think I hope the staff has appreciated that because they know what they need to get done. Um, and especially in this last year. The uh, communication has just been outstanding in terms of keeping council updated. On where we are in terms of meeting those goals and objectives, so we can help in any way we can. As the policy side versus the execution side on these. On these goals and objectives, but as most people know, we've been really focused on economic development. And Sherwood West, um, by the way, again, a huge thank you to the staff. I get to Sherwood West over at the finish line with Metro. Uh, that was a long, how many years Eric did we work?
Well, on and off for ten years, but the last cycle about three.
About three years. Yeah, yeah. And there's a lot of work that you have to do, a lot of planning you have to do, and then it's a lot of uh. Uh politicking in the region to get it over the finish line with Metro and. And I just really appreciated um, hard work, staff put it to that and the coordination and. And the willingness to work outside of our city borders to make that happen. So that was amazing. Um, but. The city continues to just hit on all cylinders. We've got a lot of great projects going on in the Tackwood employment area. Bridge, I know all of you know this, but we also have people listening, so just a reminder of some of the great stuff that we're. That we're doing out there. I get comments from other mayors all the time. Um, that range from um, boy, Sherwood's really um, punching above their weight. I mean, they're. The region is noticing that we're doing a really good job and uh, doing a really good job for our community. And bringing a lot of resources back to our community, which is great. So um, it's it's fun. To be in those meetings and hear those comments, and it's all because of. Staff and this council, um, I brag about this council all the time because we. We have uh, we have different perspectives and we don't always agree, but we always collaborate and work hard together. And ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, we we vote together um, as we move things forward. So that's great. It's made things. It's really made things easy for staff and it's made things easy for us as we work in the region and try to bring resources back to Sherwood. So I just can't thank. The council and staff enough, so. Enough of that. Um, as we go through visioning, we uh. We Jeff, we talked about this a little bit and kind of just to kind of set the table here a little bit. I mean, you guys have all been through this process before. Um, but just, you know, just a reminder, this this is not about getting into the weeds and, you know, the specifics of what projects look like. This is really about goals and I kind of a different twist on it. I know we think this way, but. I'd really encourage everyone to think about outcomes, you know, so as as we think about different goals and objectives, what are the outcomes? What are the maybe not specific uh, KPIs or. Measurables that we're going to be looking at to find success? I think you do that as you develop projects. But what are the outcomes that we're trying to achieve? Because I think that would be really helpful for the staff, the kind of as they look at, okay, what kind of projects do we need to do to get some of these things done? And I think it'll be helpful for the community to really understand what we're trying to achieve. So that. Slightly different twist, you know, to think about as we go through this process. And then the other thing, um, just real quick, as. We had, you heard me talk about this when we've in our last work session, when we talked about the uh. The lighting. Or the bridge, you know, twenty different examples at the end, I can wrap that up because. You know, we have a council that's very active. We have a lot of ideas. We have a lot of good ideas and. Sometimes we get, I don't think we get our. Boards and commissions um, prepped. Properly, so. I think we made the right decision on moving some of the artwork for that project, but I think at the end of the day, we could have done a better job. Getting them, you know, let's have a budget, you know, as they go into that process, let's. You know, if we, if it's a project that we think um, council is going to have a lot of. Thoughts, questions, etc. Let's get early. In the process joint sessions, you know, so we can kind of level set with those groups. So we're all planning to the same endpoint. Uh, so with that in mind, as we go through things, it would be great. If there's areas that anyone in here wants to make sure that we're having those upfront conversations. I can imagine Sherwood West is going to be a big one for that in terms of conference and planning. And master planning, but if there's other areas, you know, if we're doing another art project, you know, we've talked about traffic committee, we just had a joint session with them, or if there's topic areas. Projects that are coming up that you feel like, yeah, we need to have some early on. Joint work sessions or, you know, better level setting with our boards and commissions on that particular topic. Let's flag them out in here. And that way, as we move through the year and start those projects, we can make sure we're getting those meetings scheduled. Is that? That's kind of my thoughts going into it. Does anybody else have any thoughts to move forward? All right, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff from uh, Strategic Government Resources. Welcome back. Thank you for coming again and. Take it away.
Thank you, Councilor Jeff, for inviting me back. Very excited to be here and listen saying. Because you got a talk to kind of get to over that, so thank you very much. Wanted to mention and echo something that the mayor had said, which. Is it is important for you to realize something that all of you are reacting as a high performance organization. That is far in its day age to do with all of the complexities to the job, all of the challenges that have come to it. It's not easy to do this, but. Working around the country in local governments, you can see all of the strains and challenges. But because you all are so cohesive that get down to dealing with the problem, you really get that chance to improve on. You know, so congratulations. So again, for those that don't know me, my name is Jeff Time. Uh, spent about thirty plus years in local government with three different. Uh, in primarily the Arizona region. Working for growth. So as you uh, address some of the challenges that you have with growth related. Issues and new annexations that are actually coming in. Obviously, uh, it creates a whole nother set of challenges that you all are currently not able to do. For me, thirty plus years with that, I landed with the company STR, Strategic Government Resources. Quite simply, they're a great firm in that they find. Folks that were in local government for a long time that they want to get back to public sector and to the profession. In a way that they get to be close. And so with that, they've been a great firm to work with. For me personally, uh, continue to grow, able to do some other things. I'm teaching now at Arizona State University Urban Management. Uh, I'm smarter than I was a year ago because I now do the Wednesday's New York Times crossword, so it's only two. Even at my advanced stage, I'm happy with that specifically. And love doing other things hiking. I want to have advice on that. So as far as what we are looking at today. Really, you all are ahead of the game, whereas in many jurisdictions, you're need to go through. Somewhat of a vision exercise, you need to kind of lay out your. Your strengths and your weaknesses, opportunities and threats, lay them out and then do a gap analysis of how you're going to get there. We are so far ahead of that because you have a great structure in place with your pillars. Uh, so just quickly to remind everyone of the way I'm looking at it, and feel free to correct me if I've got this. Sherwood, what you have are specific pillars. Six pillars, which there's one on each side of each, so you have each of those. And honestly, they're generation, right? These are things that are often going to be. Transcending specific councils and your staff for years and years to come. There are going to be major priorities that are going to be. Within that though, we then get into what the council is specifically looking at. Those are going to be those specific goals that you've identified as well. And we'll be talking through those and we have this as a reference. That's where we're looking for all of you to make sure. Are we going down the right path? Are these the right goals? Do they define success for you? Those are going to be largely policy related items that you're looking at to make sure that. All of us are going together. And then from there. Working with staff, we talk about what are the approach to those goals? What are those deliverables that we're going to be able to do in one to three years? That's a lot of where we're going to be spending time. That's the meat and taters that we really want to take on today is to go those. Uh, thanks that I think probably were mentioning. Uh, we recognize. This is a Saturday, we're all very busy. You all have other jobs in addition to what you're doing. We're going to be very thoughtful specifically of your time as we go forward, but it's also. Quite importantly, because this is one of those few settings. Where we can actually speak informally. More on just kind of how we're going through that. That's something that's so important. The other is we get that chance to really talk about expectations. Expectations go to what? One is going to be your elected officials that are able to tell you what they're hearing from the community and what they believe is going to be necessary to achieve these goals. But it's also from all of you as staff to say, you know what? Let's lay this out as far as our resources, as far as our staffing, as far as our priorities, so let's make sure that we have dinner before we have. Having those kinds of conversations can be really funny to have. So I ask all of us to keep an open mind. And if there's something that feels like it's not something that we can take on within this period, or maybe we need to look at it broadly. I urge you to reach out. We'll go through the mayor for questions. So if you have a comment or question, please raise your hand and take it with you. Uh, I think maybe those are the things. I think. One of the other items I wanted to bring up is. This needs to be effective. In the form of, this is supposed to be living, reading, relevant documents and not just some awesome stuff. If anyone gets a chance, we get athletic today. Play is a great sports, sort of magazine paper. And they have an article, a gentleman named Joe Crutchfield. And you probably haven't heard him because he's a D two basketball coach. And. Here's the thing. That he's a division two basketball coach at Southeastern.
Oh, but southeastern.
Yeah, Southeastern, exactly. Did you read this? Isn't that incredible? So why we're bringing it up is he is the most sought after coach in the country. By much every NBA coach, major college coaches. Why is that? He's sixty-nine years old. He doesn't have any. Big motivational theory, doesn't have a set kind of broad vision that he brings forward, none of that. You know what he does is he looks, he observes, they lay out goals, and then every single game. Lays out the major goals, usually it's two major goals. This is what we're going to do and they don't change. It's essentially one of the goals is we're going to exceed on rebounds by ten. And a whole point to that is as your staff develops a budget, as you are developing your master plans, as you're going through all these pieces. For with the public and with your commissions. It should be that these are things that you're going to be able to talk about. It's kind of my ice fields. We go to the hood, you read that. Okay. If you don't mind, I would like to pass it over to Craig to kind of just talk about some observations you've had.
Sure. Morning, uh, mayor and council. Uh. I just want to, we talked about the the goals, but there's a few other things that play into those goals. I just want to kind of highlight some stuff in twenty twenty-four that was achieved. Um, great works went into uh. The goals that you guys uh, the priorities last year, but there's also other things that go on, and I just want to highlight a few of those. Uh, we implemented a outside payroll system. Uh, for efficiencies. Uh, we hired several key positions, including a finance manager, a building official, economic development manager, planning manager. A sergeant and other roles across the organization. We began to update the existing financial system. Uh, we introduced a credit card fee to reduce city cost. Implemented a cell software for building permits. Continue to work to update the website, which is in the goals. I call those operational improvements to the city. Public safety enhancements, we've implemented a drone training and operations for the police department. Continue to focus on training of drugs, taking drugs off the streets. Used a police reserve program to develop. And hire two reserve officers that are currently in background right now, would probably be expected to hit the streets in September, October. Then I break it down to urban development, infrastructure. Uh, accepted uh, Sherwood West was accepted by Metro. A lot of hours went into that from the electeds, let alone the staff itself to make that happen. Uh, developed a master plan for Murdoch Park. Completed the ADA transition plan. Completed a twenty million gallon water treatment plant expansion in partnership with the city of Wilsonville. Made good progress on the fiber to the home project. Completed several maintenance projects. The Ped Bridge is uh, under construction and is well underway. Ice Age Drive, Ice Age Drive design was completed and the project will be bid in February. That's about a five week bid process, so. You might see construction this summer. Then I break it into policy and organization. Uh, completed negotiations with ASPI and the Police Sergeants Union. We updated the personnel manual. Reintroduced management training that had been lacking in previous years. Completed a cybersecurity tabletop exercise and other emergency management tabletop exercises. Community programs engagements, we provided a full summer art education program. Seen a significant increase in sports league participations, probably additional revenue of about eight thousand dollars. Created the new Sherwood Library Foundation shelf with community and community involvement. Finalized a twenty-four, twenty-five strategic plan in the library. Launched a senior center van program, providing transportation for seniors to appointments and activities at the senior center. Completed the senior center sighting project, which was funded, a portion of that was funded through the CDBG grant. Won't go into the grants and funding, but we received a lot of those and those are in your uh, in the goals. Uh, insight and observations this first year. I I I feel we have some lack of consistencies throughout the organization in process procedures and policies. It's just the way we've done business, nothing wrong with that, but there can be improvements. Uh, certain departments need additional resources. There's opportunity to organize a bit differently to provide efficient services. Streamlining processes by using technology. Some departments still rely on paper based. Processes. Lot of opportunity for AI to become data driven, the city could be. And when I'm talking about that plan review, some of the other stuff that's out there that uh, once we get a governance, I think we should be looking at that. Uh, cross department collaboration, communication and coordination between departments, I think could be better. Better collaboration through shared platforms. This would all allow for improved problem solving and a unified approach for the city. Uh, employee training and development. Stuff's uh, some staff members may lack up to date training and new technologies that's out there. Improvement opportunities, we, if we invest in staff with the equipment and the latest skills. Uh, the performance will go up. Future op- observation. Uh, the future is bright, I feel. We have a good leadership team. We have a council that gives clear direction, so. One of the things that we didn't make progress on was our communication and marketing plan. I I would like to have some of those conversations as we move forward. So we can actually hit that goal this year and that will be a priority in our budget. I would say establishing the city branding. At the same time as we're looking at all that, what does that really mean? Um, so you can get into logos, taglines, visual identity, the voice and tone, those kinds of things. What do we want as a city as we move out there? And then as we talk about Sherwood West planning, I would hopefully we get through quite a bit of that today, what we're actually meaning. I know we talk about a lot of the land use, the zoning. Infrastructure planning for water, sewer, street, storms, broadband, park and recreation. But I want to make sure that we don't get too far ahead of ourselves and we're talking about the operational planning as well. And that's the staffing resources need. For other city services. That would include police service assessments, what it's going to take to be uh, patrol that area and to make a save. Gets right down to public works and staffing and equipment that's going to be needed to maintain. That area as well as other government services that we provide. From the administrative staff to the library services in the support team. Then on top of that, I think uh, another big portion that we need to be actually looking at is the how we're going to financially plan. That's SDCs. Rates, is that looking at? Police fees, is that looking at? How we support the day to day operations of the city. What I don't want to do is focus too much just on. The master planning, but we're not master planning the operational needs that's going to happen. And then I'm hoping today out of the session. That we can have a conversation about the metro share dollars or the one point one million dollars that we've kind of talked about uh, spending on. Property, but there might be, there's quite a loophole to go through to get that money and there might be some other opportunities and I'll let Kristen talk about that later. And then what I'm hoping today's session uh. Really compile, compile the numbers. We'll do that. I'm hoping you guys will speak up because this is where the budget. When we start working on budget, this is, we're going to take this information back and put it in the budget, no different than last year. So if there's projects, there's stuff you're wanting. I know that each one of you brought stuff up when we've met one on one. I'm hoping that that comes out today so we can actually. Uh, see if it's a priority with the rest of the council as we look forward. So. That's really what I have.
Yeah, can I, and that Craig, you just brought something really important. Just to remind everybody. If you have ideas of new things that we want to do, it's important we bring them out and vet them as council because this does. Set our agenda for the year to Craig's point. So if something new comes up in the middle of the year. We either need to wait till the next visioning session or amend. Um, our our vision and goals, you know, so we can incorporate that and stuff does come up. It's important in those conversations because staff needs some certainty. Terms of what the year looks like. And I know we have a lot of ideas. And a a question to Craig, you know, one of the things, we haven't really talked about this yet, so I apologize, but. One of the things we've tried to do and you you absolutely correct, hundred percent, this is going to set the tone for the budget, right? Is there an intermediate step we need? Like if you get into this and realize, okay, they just set all these goals and there's no way we can do all that to come back to us and say, here's. Projects we envision, here's rough. You know, uh, time and treasure requirements for those projects. To kind of ask the council again. To re-prioritize.
Yeah, I think that, I think last year we brought back some stuff in a work session or that's when we would do that, mayor, is we would. Take what we learned today from you guys. See what we can and can't do, what we can and can't do financially, and then we would bring stuff back if there's something that we can't do. Or at least put in the plan, even if it's in the following year or the couple of years out like we did last year.
Very good.
You bet.
Thank you.
Congratulations. This is someone that. Quick shoes for walls that you're looking for, you're looking to engage your staff, give them the resources that they have. Tapping into technology, I think that's exactly right, the opportunity. So have I just been blown away by the little aspects of AI that I. And then also communication, communication to your staff about how all of this will go and where resource requests into the. Well, and training. Training that never, I think so much as you talked about branding. Or engagement, just being able to be ahead of the sport and being able to tell what all of you are really thinking and doing. So help. So being proactive. Okay, so the first step is one of those, I don't expect it to go perfectly and that is absolutely okay. It's very similar to when I. I used to have to mow the lawn and use my dad's old claim. Which is that it would be like sorting fifteen times before it actually started the energy boom. And that's what this exercise. Is similar to what Mayor had said, is it's important that you give a little bit of sense beyond just what's on the paper or where we're going to spend time. What is it that you find that is important, really is something that you want to make an observation on? What is it that you think? Excites you about Sherwood? What is it that keeps you up at night with what you're coming? In other words, where you have constituents that had brought you in and you're not able to get that addressed? What is it that you think, oh, my gosh, in the future, this is something that is really exciting that I want to tap into or that we better tap? Looking for something that's like that. So you can see on there, there's something I guess I would like to hear if I can from councilor, what is something? That you find that is of interest? What is a priority for you? If it is something that's on here, let me know that too. Say, you know, I want to double down on this. But I would love to hear just a little bit from someone. If not, I'll fill in the void. If you're on your first mission or if it's something that.
Uh, sure.
That you like.
This this will make Dan happy because I always like to go last, so. Yeah, uh, this is great because, you know, we need to set the buffet so we can set the table later. Uh. Boy, yeah, I was just thinking about this. Um. I I've, on what I'm most excited about, um, I will, I'll go back to what I said earlier, you know, we just have. We have a great process, we have great staff, we have great council. And to your point, uh, that that's an enabler. You know, that that really enables us to do great things as cities, and we've been doing great things as a city, you know, as I pointed out, and I. Um, for those of you that don't work out, don't work out in the region, you know, like my career, I've worked with. Cities all across the country. This is rare. Uh, this is not the norm. We're so far ahead of other organizations when it comes to that, so. That's probably the thing I'm most excited about. Um. What keeps me up at night? Uh, I don't know. It 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 depends on the day and the month and what's going on for the last six months. It was. The whole Metro conversation and getting the uh, uh, urban Sherwood West across the finish line because. There were lots of forces working against us, and if you haven't heard. Um, it's already been appealed, you know, so we'll be going through that process, but Metro leads that.
How many people put their name?
Uh, it's, it's kind of a weird process, but there's like nine different groups. Yeah. In terms of um, priorities, you know, I think we have a great set of pillars. I want to continue to drive on those within the confines with staff. As a resources to deliver on. I think, you know. One thing that kind of long term that keeps me up at night is we have this continuing trend where three percent increase cap on property taxes versus. What our actual costs in terms of payroll, supplies, materials, etc. is going. Those lines are diverting and. We have done an outstanding job over the last um. You know, seven years, eight years of managing those budgets and our five year, you know, forecast process, you know, and it. It's put us in this place where we can do a lot of things. It's going to get every year, it's going to get harder and harder based on this trajectory, so. Um, we focused a lot on bringing in outside money, which I think we'll continue to do that. We've had some outstanding. Uh, wins as far as that goes. Uh. But I also think, and Craig, you touched on this briefly, I think um. Efficiency, so one of the things I want to talk about as a group is figuring out how we can really. How do we use technology to innovate across departments and what do we do do with that? Craig, you brought up AI plan review, which has the potential to save a lot of staff hours on. Reviewing uh, permitting and applications, but that's just something that we ran into as we talked to people in the region and stuff. There's a lot of great innovation around AI that's going in, going on in the cup tech marketplace. Lot of really interesting stuff, but we don't necessarily inherently know. What those potentials solutions are, so I. I'd like to explore getting some kind of program going where we really define what the outcomes we're looking for and we invite vendors to come in and say, here's how. A vendor come and say, here's how we'd solve that problem. Right? And really look for innovative solutions that can really help us out and as we move forward. So it's not. This isn't about, let's go identify three projects and get them done. It's about laying the framework for what the possibilities are and then bring those possibilities back to council. So that's. That's something I'm interested in. What's really driving it is uh, this this cost dynamic that we're experiencing as we move forward, you know, so how do we continue to get ahead of that? And uh.
Just for now.
Okay.
Uh, and then I'll put it in the right spot. All right, so I'm going to ask the other counselors to. Also, what are some of the other steps?
Um, Tim brought up some, some good points. I think, I don't know if it keeps me up at night, but it's definitely one thing that's always in my mind is. Our financial health of the city, although we're fortunate as a city in a lot better shape than a lot of cities around us. But we're always straddling that twenty percent, our goal to keep in reserves and. As we. Put on more requirements or more things that we want through this goal setting session, it stretches our staff farther and farther and. We don't have the funds to add the staff or get the consultants or get the outside help. Um, I. I think I see. Feel like there's probably some departments that are that are stretched. And if we can't give them the help we need, we can't accomplish these goals. Um, so that's. Always in my fore. Front of my mind. Um, the thing I'm most excited about for Sherwood um. Is. The Sherwood West area and. Making sure that we get the plan that we want and the the concept plan that we have is really good. And I'm just trying to envision it all coming together the way we want, whether that's through master planning, because we know in the past we've had ideas and then as things got. Developed in pockets, it didn't turn out exactly how we wanted, so. Um, and making sure that we get the housing types that we want up there that can. Help get different people in different stages of their lives.
Yeah. Place, family oriented.
Young families, young, our kids can come back and live here. Yeah, yeah.
And then you also mentioned. So I'm also looking at how hospitality.
Yeah.
I had, I think of y'all, conversation, it's more for me to go and grasp. Thank you.
Echoing a lot of what.
really, what a good one. Echoing a lot of what the mayor and Kim said. What keeps me up at night? In addition to, I think Kim really mentioned a lot of budget stuff, budget compression issues, but Salem, quite frankly, every time they come into session, they take away our, take away our power and give it to themselves and create, create huge mandates, one-size-fits-all solutions and whatnot, so. Every time they're in session, that's what keeps me up at night. What I'm excited about, yeah, of course.
So tell me, how do you go about, like, government affairs, reps, people with the league, talk about?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think our mayor has been really proactive and exceptional in that regard. Working with the League of Borg City is of course, but also directly with our representatives in Salem and being down there and testifying when we can and trying to get our voice heard, you know, as much as possible at the league relationship with the governor's office.
Yeah.
And I think it's been, it feels at times like it's it's a a fate accompli, if you will, like, you know, the die's already been cast and we're doing what we can to to voice our displeasure, but the outcome's not gonna change. But that's the frustrating part, but I think you gotta keep, you gotta keep beating your head against that wall because what other choice do we have, right? And maybe, maybe something will turn at some point, or maybe you soften the blow a little bit by time until the next go-around. So I think we've been doing as much as, you know, between, between staff and electeds, I think we've been doing an incredible job as much as we can in that regard. It's obviously not something in our control. What keeps, what I'm excited about, you know, Sherwood West is obviously the big one. Close to me, you know, that's my background in the planning commission and, and that, and I'm excited we got that approval pending red appeal and really kind of what's highest priority for me for the upcoming year. Obviously fiscal responsibility, public safety are always one and two, but, you know, beyond that, we really need to, to set the stage for planning, for comprehensive planning, master planning this area, right? And that means we have to acquire the right, either people or, or knowledge to understand how we can, how we can go about this prep planning process to get as close to the outcomes as we want as possible. A lot of, we gotta up, we gotta upscale our knowledge, we gotta upscale our abilities in taking on an area of this size and planning for it with all of the tools available to us. And maybe even coming up with some new ones and being innovative in that area to really try to ensure the best outcomes possible. So to me, that's, that's one, one of the things I'm most excited about and also is, is a high priority. Also, the other, updating the other master plans, right? I know we have in our, in our next couple of year cycle, transportation master plan and parks, a couple others, and I think those are are really important ones. Transportation feels like a pretty important one. And I think also in the TSP, we haven't done it in a while, and I think maybe there's an opportunity to kind of look at it through a different lens, right? Like, you know, more multimodal, more, you know, okay, this has been in the TSP forever. Does it still make sense or is there a different approach, you know, to transportation that we should look at or different things we should look at that maybe we haven't in the past? So I'm excited about that one.
On the TSP, I just kind of, to let everybody know how that's gonna work is, with Sherwood West coming in later, we've already started the process, so we're gonna do the existing city right now, the, the current city, and then we'll do amendment to the contract when we're ready, as soon as we go through the process and have a better idea of, of the master planning space.
So I, I agree with a lot of what's been said. I, the only tweak I'd make on it is for the affordable housing in, in Sherwood West, the thing that I'm most excited about is I, I do kind of want to start with a clean slate, because when I look at what, you know, everybody wants affordable housing in the state, and I think some of the one-size-fit-all solutions that Salem's proposing, if they had an example of a community that built affordable housing, even if we did things in a different way, right? Because we've made it, you know, and again, I, I'll just throw out, you know, bike-friendly or, you know, corner grocery stores, so everything's walkable or different, you know, like, we throw out some of the existing design standards, say, hey, this area, we're gonna try doing different because of these following things. And if it's successful, all of a sudden, they, they latch on to it, right? Everybody wants to be part of a winning team, and so I, I want to be able to say, hey, we're doing something in that area that can be replicated elsewhere and still keep Sherwood feeling like Sherwood, because that ties in very heavily with my, the thing that keeps me up, which is the demographic shift in our whole country, but specifically, you know, we don't, we don't have as many young families moving in. We've got these fantastic schools that we paid a lot of money for and are gonna have to be opened to, you know, cities all around us if we, if we don't start getting more people to fill them. And I think that that changes the nature of the city. It's, it's more of a mercenary kind of approach rather than, oh, I see, you know, the kids from my soccer team at the grocery store and my, you know, from my different classes, like, that's the communities, the small community feel we have. And that goes away as soon as you get kids. And by the way, it also weakens all the surrounding school districts because most of the time, they're not paying to send their worst students to us. They're taking their best students to send them to the best school in the area, you know, and so anyway, the, that's what keeps me up. And then I, and so I think innovation's key on that, I feel like to Doug's point, up-leveling our skills. That used to be done in olden times by, you know, visiting places and communities, but now it's like literally YouTube. Right? You can go on and see, oh, how are other communities planning this? How are, how is it being done elsewhere? And can we learn from that? And then also, I'm, I'm big on rebranding and trying to get something that I don't know, I, I see a lot of Sherwood sweatshirts that where the money's gone to the high school or other teams. And I say, boy, it'd be cool if our logo was something that was something wanted, somebody wanted on a sweatshirt, somebody wanted on a hat. So, you know, whatever it is, so, and by the way, this just makes it iconic, right? We've got an iconic-looking bridge going, and we've got other things that are really unique about our Old Town and stuff like that. I would love to have something that captures that.
It's a great point. I mentioned on my wife, I brought this to my, it really checks us out. So I brought my wife and we went out to dinner last night, we had coffee this morning. You have some energy in this area, and so I would tell you, you're being successful in your revitalization. But then it gets to the broader thing, especially Sherwood West comes in, is people identify with neighborhoods before a city. So how is it that you create a brand new city is the question. Well, one of those will be, as you do Sherwood West, is making sure you're doing the elements that bring them into Sherwood.
Yeah.
itself, and the amenities type of that, or that you welcome those folks that were there into other parts of Sherwood. So great opportunities. Any observations?
Hi. So one of the things that I think about with this getting the Sherwood West ask is something that's been brought up with me being on plan commission liaison often is the tree code. And it seems like every single development that's mentioned in some way or another. And with the recent development in the town unemployment area, we've seen, since, you know, all those trees taken down and now replanted. And so looking at what we have currently in place in our policies, the only thing that I could really find was our comprehensive plan 2040 under the livability, marketability goal for is the healthy and valued ecosystems. And that focuses on the natural resources and us being, you know, good stewards of Sherwood's natural resources. Looking beyond that into bigger things, same thing with the town unemployment area. The, something that was brought up was the light pollution down to the wetlands and how that's affecting our natural resources. So again, with Sherwood West with this additional development, you know, do we have something in place, a policy that actually we can use to enforce some of this stuff, or is it up to the developers? And so then I was looking even beyond that, something bigger, like with our new public works building that we're gonna be putting in. There's so many incentives out there for climate-related building material. And so are we in a place to, you know, apply for those grants or incentives? And a lot of the things that I've found is that you need to have a climate action plan in place in order to be eligible for that. And that kind of encompasses, you know, all things related to wildlife, nature, natural resources. You know, we sure would, I think a lot of people have moved here for the environment, Sherwood Forest. So if we don't even have that, like, what, what are we building here? So that's something that I would like to, maybe to have a discussion about Tigerd and Twalton. They've done different approaches with that, Twalton. They, it took them almost three years. When they started with analysis, then they went to community engagements, and then formal discussion with the city council, to kind of formulate what this plan looks like. So I'd love to have community engagement if we go along that, that way. The other thing for me is the opioid settlement money. It's a limited resource and a lot of families have been affected by that crisis. And so I want to make sure that we're being intentional with the money, using it for youth prevention, saving lives. And for me personally, personally, not for, not for equipment, not for large equipment purchases. So that's another thing.
What I'm doing, by the way, so these are just points that I'll have. Again, they might be at the wrong spot. I might be lost as we go through the pillars. Ultimately, I'll work with Craig and Kristen, and we'll get them in the right spot. Don't worry about this factor. So don't worry if you see it in the wrong area or section. It's really, make sure we get this down. And in certain areas, I may be asking, do we have a broader consensus? It doesn't all have to be done now, but let's get the tidings out there. Not to put you on the spot, I know.
So I think every, most, most of it's been said. I would go a little bit deeper with what Counselor Giles was saying regarding housing and affordability. That's one area that I'm very passionate about. And how many times I hear, well, we can't move to Sherwood, Sherwood, we can't afford it, that type of a thing. The other area that I would like to see as continuing is a revitalization of Old Town Sherwood, our downtown core, and keep continuing that moving forward, connecting with businesses and, and doing more there. And then I think the third thing that I'm very passionate about is involving youth and getting that up and going because they're our future. If we don't do something about it, we're not going to have people sitting in our seats in the future. So being, being very intentional and involved there. Other than that, everything else has been said.
Certainly the overarching long-term is inflation and everything connected to, I want to be right-sized staff-wise, I want to reward and have great staff and deliver the services that are needed, and you'd have the resources to make that happen. So inflation is near-term, certainly excited about wrapping up the projects that are well underway. And excited about the related elements of those projects and what we're doing with now finishing the bridge, soon to build a big road, the, the build-out of our large industrial area and the businesses and jobs that will bring ultimately, you know, rebuilding Oregon and building up the pork facility, cleaning that area, cleaning that area up. And then all the opportunities of Sherwood West when it comes to the housing mix. Everything else is related to the importance of doing that, staffing appropriately and planning elements of that. Yeah, super excited about broadband, getting that wrapped up and expanding and doing lots of great things in and outside of town. The work we've started with Old Town, downtown is, as Renee mentioned. Awesome. And we're we're in a great place. There's, there's risks and opportunities as always, but I, I feel very very fortunate to have everyone around the table that we do here and the passionate commitment that everybody has to this community, either working for the city as in a paid way or as volunteer way, and then all the other folks that stand with us in the community, other than the rest of the employees and the rest of the community and community volunteer.
That's what stands out here, if you have aspirational goals, in a time that's a hardship, you had aspirations. These are all items to address. If you'd like, I understand we're gonna be very thoughtful time. I'm gonna be moving you through those pillars pretty fast. You can always slow me down, but do you want to take a quick break for a second, or do you want?
Get going.
Like people couldn't step out when they need to step out. Yeah, it's fine. I'm gonna, I'm gonna bottle that.
All right, so here is what I thought we would do. We can adjust as needed. Again, it's kind of getting a feel for the market, where you're at, how passionate you are. What we didn't want to necessarily do, we, we can, good fortune, it's just recently, November, you had it updated on, they were describing us, we're kind of giving it overview. So it's a little more forward-looking on this, but sometimes I may be clarifying myself. Let me try walking through this and see how we, economic development. I think this is gonna be important. I'm looking at the first page and our deliverables. Like we have had overall through council and Sam, but one of our major goals at government first is we need to support new commercial industrial development in targeted areas. Is that still green? That's still the way you think that's gonna be a critical goal for you? You feel that's right, or does it need to be rewarded, or are we on the right path? That's still critical? Thumbs up, good. So what, what we're looking at is your staff saying, well, look, we're gonna work with, we know we need to update some of these, so ask Metro or Sherwood West, maybe you were in a good place, that probably is gonna be something that's gonna be moving out, we're gonna be adjusting that. Explore collaborations with schools on programmatic and facility partnership. Knowing what you've done and not to go through all of those. Are we on the right path? Is this still something that is gonna be an approach? Do we feel like we've got everything in place, or there are some other elements of work with the schools? We're okay?
I, I honestly think we've made some good starts. I don't know that we've made anything sustainable, like unless I'm unaware of it. I, I know we had two really good meetings there where industry leaders were there at the school and there was desire to get stuff done. I don't know that unless I'm wrong.
I think it's, it's a tough one because we're kind of facilitators in that role.
Yeah.
In terms of getting the schools to work with businesses, and you're right, those are great meetings. But I think we need to continue to drive that facilitation. I'm sorry.
Yeah, as I was gonna say, I guess my two questions are A, that's history, I have to ask this, do we have a willing partner? And B, like, what, what is our role, or should we even have a role? Like, I mean, this is really between the school district and these I need outside industry partners.
I, I
I, I hear you say facilitator, and I like that.
Yeah.
I want to make sure that we're clear on our role.
I, I would add to that. It's, it's key for us from an economic development point of view, because it is something that potential businesses coming into the city don't get. So I think it's important for us to facilitate. But you're right, I do think we have a willing partner. Let's get, this, they have the Renee.
Erin Downs.
Well, I know Erin, but who's, does the CTE program? Oh, Barrett. I mean, she, she has a lot of passion for this. She works for the school district, so I, I think we have a willing partner. I think it's resources.
I have a different, little bit more. I think we started as the facilitator and had those meetings, and then I think the school district has done their part in taking it from there, hearing from Adam Mitchell, the principal of the high school, and Ms. Barrett on what they're doing and connecting students with internships and things like that. So I'm not sure what our role is continuing or just checking in with them and seeing what's happening, but I think the school district took it from there and are working on that.
It's maintenance.
Any quick observations to the current staff? So can we see where they're in? Maybe we do a check-in with them, or do we try another one-off program for a year to see if they take, if we're not, so I'll define success.
My question would be whether we develop that up into the further education institutions where really for some of these big manufacturing companies, where the roles are more technical or really need a higher skill level, maybe if we could expand that into further education rather than just the school district.
In my community, and I love this, it's such a great point. The community college system has now specifically tied to semi-developed.
I also know Liz Barrett at the school district and established a relationship with
I also met um Liz Barrett at the school district and established a relationship with her and she's still, they still need connections. They, they still need help connecting with the manufacturers in town. And as a result, helped me because I got more deeper uh contacts at Lamb Research and some others, so it's kind of a good two way street. But um yeah, we're uh, I think they, we, it's something to be maintained and. Checked in on.
I think that one of the things that was, that stood out to me at the first meeting was how few of the school district people had like LinkedIn accounts. Right, so they weren't, they, they weren't aware of how to, you know, because they don't use it really in that, in that arena. And so part of it is, I do believe we still need to make those introductions, but I also think that. If Kim, if we're to the place where it's just maintenance mode, then it's on the city to start pulling it into our marketing materials. For these new businesses and everything else, where now we say, hey, we have a. We have a functioning, you know, student to trade program or student to uh industry program or whatever. And that's one of the reasons you want to move your business here, is we, we've got something waiting for you.
Yeah, it might be more appropriate to say maintain and facilitate collaborations with schools and industries. Instead of exploring. Might, we might consider changing it to maintain it and. Facilitate collaborations.
Yeah, Jeff, I'll just keep taking notes on here for us to be able to update up here.
Okay, excellent, so. Clear, now let me just make sure that I'm not trying to. Listen, clarify infrastructure required and financial approach for targeted, are we talking Sherwood West or do you have additional sites? I know you're all about to go through a master plan.
But citywide.
But it's us.
Citywide.
Citywide. Any quick observations on that? And from a staff side, do we feel like we've identified those, we know what the infrastructure is needed? What would be likely for city versus developer versus outside, anything like that?
I think we uh will stay engaged with the resources that we've been working with or other opportunities that come along. So I say to drive, we submitted, what, twenty million dollars or so for loan? I mean, we have the connection, so we'll continue to do that when we're Sherwood West too.
Like we have a good grasp on. What the infrastructure is both needed and. So we're good with that? Break you. Right, again, moving for just to help you all through, but I can slow down whenever you would like, explore financing options available to support infrastructure and economic development, so. And again, as you go in specifically, Sherwood might have its own.
Can I add a thought under this upper discussion? Um, a lot of the wins, and they've been huge wins, we've had in terms of bringing traded sector jobs into the city. Have been with companies that are just relocating, so D W Fritz came from Wilsonville. Lamb just expanded into our region, N S I came from Wilsonville, I believe as well. And the reason I bring that up is I think we need to continue to look for. National companies and even international companies, and I was just reminded this uh this recently, because. Eric and I had a gentleman reach out that represents uh tech firms in Korea and Japan. That wants to talk to us, so I think we need to continue to find ways to bring in, not just cannibalize our region. But bring in uh companies that haven't traditionally been based here.
Yes. Okay, I'm looking ahead and council also said we need to make sure we're promoting strong diverse economic flow of opportunity, so obviously having. Various industries that are providing access to high quality jobs and well supported service force in a way that you've all approached us. Look at our developing code, promote stronger development. Do we feel on that, are we in a good place based off of that, some work sessions on the code, are we good to go? Do you want to continue, is there any adjustments to it, if you'd like, where we're at on our development codes? Be proactive while maintaining to the standards, the industry standards?
That doesn't mean work, it's, it, I think there's work, especially when we draft um specific. Things with Sherwood West, new zoning types, targeted zoning types.
Yeah, yeah, my, my two cents on it is that, you know, the, the Tonkin employment area right now and other, I guess, key growth areas like industrial. General industrial areas are going pretty well, that, that the growth is coming, the company, the right companies are coming, so. Um I don't think there's a major overhaul that's needed, I agree with Counselor Mays, we need to pay attention to Sherwood West to make sure we get that right as well. Um but right now, things are going well, I don't know why we would.
Gonna look at, we're gonna review and potentially update development code, finish that review.
We, we haven't done that yet, the last step at this work session was to identify the target industries, which we did, and you guys green, greenlit those industries. And so now we'll look at, you know, does the development code actually allow those and are there other things? To be completely honest with you, there's gonna be potentially some competing interests and competing goals here, and that's okay, uh tree code. And, you know, is, is a good example of that, where the developers are gonna want to, you know. Make development as easy as possible, frankly, and that's gonna be, you know, mass tree removal, so. We'll have to thread the needle, um you know, uses are one thing. And then development standards are another thing, and I think we can look at both of those uh coming up and figure it out. I, I think there's still more to do, um and there could be some decision making by the council as policymakers to balance uh some competing interests.
I, I, I just want to add kind of a nuance there, because. That, that part, those, what, four or five parcels of Sherwood West and North Side, it's almost two hundred acres. That's a very unique opportunity in the entire region in terms of, for, if you don't know this. I don't think there's another two hundred acre site in the entire metro region right now, you know, in terms of opportunities, so. I think it's a, we just need to make sure we're addressing that to attract. You know, not just another twenty acre company, but can we potentially get a hundred acre? Organization to come in, so I would add the word, you know, I think, and I think Keith mentioned this a little bit, we need to be nimble. You know, if we have an opportunity coming in, there's something archaic in our code that's causing a problem, we should consider those things. Just be nimble as those opportunities arise.
Well, and, and I don't know that we want even just like, we don't want a, a hundred acre warehouse, right, you know, yeah.
Already disallowed warehouse.
I know, I know, but, but that's the thing where we have the, the differing uh codes where we say. Hey, we want these businesses, you know, like on the Tonkin employment area, but then we also say. Yeah, but we, we want this old town overlay, you're this old town uh revitalization, and so I agree that. We want both of them, we just want them in the right place and the right. Uh, the right vibe, I don't know how to say that really.
Yeah, that's why I have zoning and targeted.
Yeah, and, and just as a reminder for the, the, our, our conditions on the metro code is no warehousing, uh no data centers.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we've already taken care of a little bit of that.
Yeah.
Uh but it's a good point, but it's just, we need to be a little bit nimble, and I'm not saying we trade stuff away.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but we did need to be a little bit nimble, yeah. Yeah, oh, yeah, good, perfect.
We're gonna want this position for highest. And that means there will be flexibility that is needed, but you're also gonna do things. Alright, then in addition to that, as we go to the record, you all had said, let's continue the revitalization of Old Town by exploring tools. That encourage its distinctive character, I'm telling you, you're on the right path, one of the ways was. Leading the Old Town strategic plan, I am aware that you have a committee that is now going through and. You all good for this, should we adjust some of the approaches to maybe update that as progress for phase two or three of downtown?
I would say, I would add this to the list of projects that we need to make sure we have early engagement, joint sessions with council.
That's with the committee or?
How big's the committee? How many people are on the committee here?
The C A C.
Yeah.
Ooh, ten or so, so uh Counselor Mays, Counselor Browser, both on the C A C. And then we'll, we'll also have a technical advisory committee, uh we also are planning very general public engagement. Um surveys, uh open house meetings, things like that, so all that is coming as well.
Okay, anything else that's here as a holiday since I got free tier?
Hey Jeff, I think we missed two points after the improved development. No, the identify target industries and then the marketing.
So what I did, I apologize, I went through there just because, but it sounds like you were in the process of identifying targeted.
I was gonna say, we've done that one side.
I just want to make sure that.
Taken off, okay.
So do we remove it?
Be okay to, do you feel like you're on the right path or do you want it adjusted to be? Always continually adjust for targeted industry.
Seems like we've already identified.
Oh, yeah, I would, well, I would just say, if you guys feel empowered to come at us at any time and say, hey, this new industry looks like a winner for Sherwood. Then I would be okay not having to report on it all the time, right, if, as long as they know. They can always be on the look for new industries.
It feels like we've completed the goal and then it enters into normal. If we keep everything on here as a map, and then this list will become.
We feel like that's missing, it can come back.
I would say that's the only about the very first thing too. We have two votes that will have an impact, but they're not that.
Right. Yeah, the next one's very encouraged balancing insurance tax base. Your approach to that, I'm pretty sure, when you say encourage balancing insurance tax base. You're looking at annexation policies and processes. Is that related? The right spot exactly, I mean, I love the chart, but making sure you have policies that manage growth effectively. That's not necessarily. Tax base, sometimes you want to say it's gonna be quality development, but then encourage it to high tax. Quick observations on, it seems like there's a little.
Both of these are still relevant.
It's more of a guiding principle in everything we do.
Yeah. Yeah, dude, I, I thought we, we, we talked about using annexation policy as a possible breaker lever. Once we've got the master plan for Sherwood West, right, we were.
Next step.
Yeah.
Target metrics for jobs, how's the balance? So I remember this conversation from last year, I think some of you all have talked about that, is. Uh with regard to your housing stock and then access to jobs and it's the jobs. Uh it's a great point, you want to have. Opportunities, jobs for your residents in the area, while at the same time trying to get the distinct character. This reflect that, do you still agree this long term? That we should look at that as a ratio, or did no one really?
I, I think that's an out, it's an outcome. Yeah, I, I think it needs to be defined what that looks like, but great, I thought we had, we had generated some reporting on this in the past.
We can look back, uh we might have, Bruce might have done some stuff with that.
Something to us that just. It gave us some averages of other places that we didn't ever really.
Yeah.
Identify what we were looking for yet, as we weren't to that point.
It was a, a document that was produced, um but it was a small section, it wasn't super detailed, so.
The carrot or the light bulb that dangling over was as we were. Envisioning Sherwood West was just to remember. We're a better community, we can't survive as a better community. So they were purposeful in putting a lot of jobs land over there. As long as that continues to overhang the conversation as they mass, as the community master plans that area. We're never gonna hit my, my, in my mind, the ratios that we need, just because we were so underwater ratio wise to start with. I mean, I would have, I would have, you know, twenty percent housing on Sherwood West, but. That wasn't realistic. Unfortunately.
I guess I would say, to me, it's so valid, I mean, I think we need to identify K P I's.
I will put that down, so making that an outcome, identifying what that, that K P I would be. Really help. Uh and then you have something to benchmark and.
Yeah, because even within saying this is jobs land is not enough. Because, you know, like, one of the reasons we're not allowing data centers, why they raise a lot of property taxes, they don't create a lot of jobs. Right, so even though it's an industry you can bring in, you're not, you're not hitting the jobs line, so I think having the metric and measuring these things.
Yeah.
Area that they just leading up which are revenue sources that they're getting from data center. Exactly, the point is how to monetize.
And with Sherwood West, there is gonna be pressures to put housing where we have targeted jobs. It's like, oh, now this is jobs, so let's focus on jobs.
Our pre-emption challenges, yes.
Oh, that's.
Yeah.
Great, and then, uh last thing we had is, I remember the conversation, bringing jobs to Sherwood that provide wages and allow people to live and work Sherwood, so. And then really, there was again another outcome there, saying, let's make sure we're trying to. See, is there a, what would be a plan of attack that we would have higher than maybe a cost of the company? That's still viable?
I think they go hand in hand with each other.
You could combine them.
I would. Uh I'm not in a. I, I know one other aspect of that could be, as you have developments to come in, especially if they're looking for incentives or they have entitlements that come in. That they can meet certain criteria, I know other communities, that's what they look at, so it's not industry specific as much as business.
I, I agree, that is a great example why we don't allow warehousing because in Sherwood West, because. One, it's a transportation issue, and two, it's not creating job compatible with our housing market, so.
Thing else on economic development that. You did a great job, very comprehensive, anything else that you think is missing from Sherwood's perspective, I think you're an earlier, my own view is.
I guess one, are there any additional uh incentives for development that we need to be considering?
Oh, that's really good, yeah.
Congratulations from staff.
Yeah, I mean, uh we did get some feedback from council at the same September seventeenth work session, and we talked about financial versus non-financial incentives. And the general direction was uh pursue the non-financial incentives, and so we are discussing that um internally, internally, planning manager and Eric as well. Um, how do we, you know, expedite review? Uh one, just example is we could do concurrent uh building plan review and land use review at the risk of the applicant, but that's. That's huge, it saves the applicant months in terms of fee, you know, construction loans and things like that, if they can. Not have to do one after the other, so it's things like that that we're looking at as well. It's exactly, it's a good way to say it's financial to them. But it's not a direct financial incentive from us, but it counts as money to them.
I, I. Oh, sorry, yeah, I, I would. Like to put financial incentives back on the table, and specifically within the U R A. I think, you know, like when you look at the, what we're doing with the downtown overlay. It wouldn't take a lot of money a year, you know, considering our U R A is gonna generate eighty something million dollars over thirty years. If you carved out fifty to a hundred K a year out of that, you could have some great, um you know, S T C offset programs, stuff like that. To really encourage the type of businesses that we're looking for downtown, it's, I, I think that kind of thing should be on the table.
I think that's gonna be part of the discussion of the Old Town area.
It is. Uh yes, but I think in terms of our, I don't think we should have a, a uh pillar here that says no economic development. Incentives, I think it needs to be on the table where appropriate.
Yeah, that's my ref blocking. We said full speed ahead on non-financial incentives, and we are willing to look at financial incentives for the right. For the right applicant, for the right scenario.
Addressed it, it was mostly that, I, I fully expect the economic stuff to come after the Old Town thing, and as we get into the. Sherwood West, because I was talking to a local person in Old Town, they said, well, you know, uh Camby said. I'll give you ten grand to open a, a, a thing by me, you know, by us, and it's like. If we're about the same as this other community and one's gonna give you ten K to, to offset your S T Cs. That might be all you need, right, if it's a coin flip otherwise, you know, and so, um I, I just, I feel like in order to. Um and, and by the way, we don't want to do it for everything, but for the things that make Sherwood feel Sherwood or. Add to the old time charm or the hospitality zone or whatever, we may say, hey, it's worth it to the citizens to. Add to the old time charm or the hospitality zone or whatever, we may say, hey, it's worth it to the citizens to incentivize something a little bit.
And if I could just add a cautionary tale, we lost one of the most beloved restaurants in town. Um, to Tiger, bec- because we didn't have an incentive program when they had to relocate. Yeah.
Of the S D Cs. Of those, a lot of, uh, the same state conferences they get together, look at model location.
Salem's trying, they try every year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mayor, uh, as we're talking about incentives in the U R A, there's been identified about four hundred thousand in the U R A plan. For the public works site, is that something that you would like us to look at with this of moving some of that money around for some of these other sites? Because that's the only thing identified for incentives, um, in the plan or, I mean, we'd, this is a bigger conversation, but we'd have to look at. Maybe some other projects that are way out there that we're not doing, uh, to be able to offer some of those if we don't do that.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Excellent, how we all doing on, doing okay? Again, I think about the news tends to be the longest, there's lots of broad conversation, I'll kind of go through it, so I imagine we'll go faster and you had more of those.
Yeah. And, and just reminder, we have a U R A that's killing it, I mean, we are blowing past all of our forecasts on that U R A, so. Yeah.
Okay, so one of the others, so making sure that you have the infrastructure, so an on-stable pillar is. Infrastructure within the area that it's going to be able to accommodate all of the needs of your housing, your businesses. Uh, make sure that you're not having, getting the maintenance at an appropriate level. Uh, pointing to the emergency issues that come up, then obviously position yourself, do it the strength of your work with your existing, so. In that, one of the things we have to build, keep pedestrian connectors, so we know, obviously, congratulations, by order for pedestrian bridge progress. Kind of there, do you want to keep that, is there anything that needs to be adjusted with? When you say between Sherwood East and West, and we have the bridge, it's the one way to do that, so anything else, or are we okay to keep that as it stands?
Keep it in.
Got it, all right, you're arriving up, oh, you're going to, and you have Cedar Creek Pedestrian Wildlife Undercrossing, so updating to. And so that is updated, the flip lane maps, so it's looking at right opportunities, how are we on?
Great. Craig, I know we're going after money and state to take that to a design, what do we say, thirty percent design? We're going after money, um, at the federal level and the state level to continue, we should make sure we're, because we did the flip plane maps, correct?
Yeah, we're currently working on that.
Yeah. Uh, the next step is getting to that, like thirty percent design, which really makes us grant ready, go out there.
We can add, uh, now in the more longer term, all, um. Chapman, ninety-nine. Chapman Road, ninety-nine intersection.
Get that one done, right, start.
Do you mind, I apologize, I know you all know this. What, what is the requirements of that?
Ch- Chapman's an intersection on the very southern end of the city on ninety-nine West. Uh, which, when you, if you go out there now, it feels like you're out in the country, but eventually that's going to be the southern border of the city. So let's make sure we're designing that for good east-west connectivity.
Yeah, yeah, great separated, ideally.
On the east side, the, the city, the city's already developing down to Chapman, so. Now we should replace it.
Yeah, and the hospital, the hospitality zone will be right there, so having, that's another consideration to make sure we have easy access to ninety-nine.
Thank you. Okay. Glad you brought that up, thank you.
And the existing intersection is constantly being, um, I don't know, constant. People are, uh, being forced to turn right and they're all going around the thing and going straight, it's just, it's, it's a port design the way it is today, so we.
Thank you.
About. It's just being, a- and so people are literally breaking the law every single day when I go to that intersection. Yeah.
Is there, can I ask a clarifying question there, is there an interest, I know we did the, the Brookman refinement, uh, plan a few years ago, is there an interest in looking at the. Location of that intersection?
Still, it's still un- undefined.
Okay, so it's not set in stone, you're, in your mind, it's not, it's gonna be here, it just needs to be an intersection, it needs to be potentially.
It is such a difficult area, as we know, between the, the point of ninety-nine, but then also the railroad.
Gas pipe.
And the gas pipe.
Yeah. Heartless of where it ends up in that zone, you know, make sure we get it right.
And that, and that's hanging over the head of that whole.
Well.
Yeah, development potential of that area.
Yeah, thanks.
So as I go forward, I see, uh, so we could, as continued, if that's, I'm sure we brought down the utility, one, the structure for Sherwood and beyond, that's a great. Frankly, it's like it's still, probably, if you're certain you've gone there, or simply Sherwood broadband fiber to the home. Go now, are we okay on twenty, is that still all makes sense? Feel good, I know you didn't feel all updates on that, it seems like.
Staff's working really hard, it's going ready.
Place on that.
Jeff.
Shovel ready fiber expansion.
Hold up, Dan, Dan.
Play it, or they're sorry.
Sorry, can I go back to the, uh, Cedar Creek Pedestrian Wildlife Undercrossing? Um, and potentially consider a sub bowl, bowl of point of the Ice Age Trail, uh, as that's kind of connected with it and just. Making sure that, yeah, that those are being connected together and worked on at the same time, so. That's the Ice Age Trail.
Ice Age Trail goes.
Connected to the.
Was part of the wildlife under crossing and beyond it.
That's gonna be key to, you know, that's grant, that's really good point.
Fine, well, you don't see it on there, I've got it down there.
Thank you.
Okay, Brad's obviously in a corner, but you do progress down, your body don't, your resident house, but. Great broadband, and so much that you're, thinking of your successor of others, and you're now tapping into. Do we feel like progress is there, you have good updates on this, any, anything that we need to change within those? One of them, I did have questions, I would have developed shovel ready fiber expansion projects, if something else there that's still a priority, we feel that that.
Generally, we do it offline, we do exact session on broadband, but for specific stuff, but.
If you had to add a K P I. Oh, just because if you had to add a K P I, it's when does it get to Counselor Giles' house? Cause I know I'm last on the list. I already know I'm last on the list, um, that's fine. I'm in a very rocky area of town, it's very difficult to drill through my neighborhood, so.
Month that goes by, one month.
Uh, but the key, the key thing that's coming up is already mentioned here in terms of grant opportunities, so I think we're good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Has this completed then?
Oh, yeah.
No, it's not completed, are you talking about the developer?
Yeah.
Yeah, could be a bead coming up. Yeah.
I think that's more of an ongoing, right, opportunity to become available in the area.
Like a maintain. Bead, bead's gonna be a big one.
Okay, so quickly on the public works facility, identifying sources, I know you're all in that process and. Design for Brownfield, kind of power we feeling with that, again, you've had some updates on that, you were awarded. You grant some congratulations to that, or do you feel like we need to update these at all as far as timing of it, do you like the right? Or be the right place on those two?
Second one still need to be on here, or the more of a, we, we completed this goal and obviously. The city will, will drive it to completion.
Craig, are you comfortable with the building help envelope size, um, as we envisioned a number of years ago to withstand? With the growth that we'll all be seeing with, with Sherwood West?
The facility, the, the property actually has about an acre in the back, and it would be for expansion if we go with the two levels, we had quite a bit of room in there. Cause we were, at that time figuring, some other folks from City Hall could be in there, so depending on what that looks like, but there is an additional acre on that side too.
There, I'm sure we're.
Yep.
And we're thinking twenty years out.
Easier to put a, another level on the building and leave it empty. You know, we build it, but whatever, whatever.
Yeah, no. It's not coming empty.
So I think we're, uh, when you, we're talking about the funding for the actual cleanup, we're probably about a little over two million dollars that we're still. Need for the cleanup parts, we have the five million dollar grant, we'll probably be asking for eight hundred thousand this year, I think that's what we were told by, uh. C F M that we could actually go for with the federal government, so when we go back in February, March, we'll probably be asking about that. But we do need, and we'll be looking at some other, uh, state options for Brownsfield this year, so.
Already working. State.
Yeah.
It's potential for some street funding.
So does this need to stay on?
Yes.
All right, if I go to the, the next page, we'll be talking about master plans, glad that you have that in there. Of course, master plans can be the gift that keeps giving, it's great that you're getting important information, looking at what is needed. What often can be the challenge is when you get what the recommendations are, are they tied to the, the school reality? And, and we lay out what all the impacts are, you are currently, you've awarded transportation master plan, congratulations, it's a two-year process that you're going through. Now looking at water, storm and sanitary sewer, are we okay with that?
I just, uh, give an update on the transportation plan, we did award a contract in October, but we've had staff working on the bridge quite a bit the last couple of months, uh, to keep that on track. So that project staff wise has fallen a couple of months behind, and we just did a work back with joy to actually manage that project now, so I expect it to. Kick off and, uh, so it might, we might be a couple of months behind on that from the original start, just to let everybody know, so.
Staff resource capacity taken on the master plan, so we're able to work with. Fulgents to get those going, once it.
Yeah, I think, uh, the master plans that are laid out here, the water sewer and, uh, storm, they're on that schedule, I think that, um. What could end up happening is, uh, there could be amendments made, uh, the water has quite a bit of stuff that's already in Sherwood West, but depending on how the. The master plan goes for what's going to be out there, we might have to do some amendments or shift the schedule around a little bit, so. That's kind of where we're at on funding wise, we have it in the S D Cs to be able to do those projects.
Let's get to, well, S D C update, obviously, we find it well with near the completion of your master plan, it's helpful. Sending you on a path for how you can actually. Great, and so I go forward, then we are. Next to me now, within that continuing to high quality. Index for, I love that you have a P C I index of what we. That's really good and hard to maintain, so you obviously have a thoughtful plan going forward. Do you all feel on this, someone's staff too, you feel like we are having a good funding mechanism for the maintenance? Figure of replacement of.
I would just, uh, as we move forward with the ADA transition plan that you, uh, you guys approved Tuesday night, as well as. How the traffic safety committee projects that come in from there, I could see that not being staying at eighty-four, eighty-three, cause some of that money could be shifting off, it might get closer to the eighty. Uh, just, I want to give you a heads up, because there's some stuff we have to do in that plan. But I feel we'll stay at the eighty or above, it could just shift different years.
Which still gives us good roads.
Yep.
And we know when we leave Sherwood still.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I don't see any issues there, it just might not stay towards the eighty-four and this eighty-five where it's been, because we might need to put some money into the ramps and some of the other requirements that we have.
I think in terms of funding mechanisms, we just need to continue our policy of funding maintenance first before we. Fund capital projects.
To me, the first two items here, see. Not like goals, or like ongoing operations.
Right.
So I would advocate not having them on the list, I think the third one, I'm still staying.
I'd agree with that.
I'd agree with that.
Uh, sure, the P C I, that's just part of your ongoing operation of asset management.
So, like, where is it? That, uh. P C I of eighty, target minimum, minimum threshold, where does that live? If it's not on here.
It's a department goal, it stays through the budget, it's a performance measure in the budget.
Okay, there you go, I'm left perfect.
Yeah.
Have it, right, if you see that it's an issue, but it's really maintaining. High asset.
When it's buried, when it's a, it's part of the budget.
Yeah.
Target stuff, that's, that's perfect.
And your asset plan is also part of the budget process, that's also included in the five-year plan.
And where. We would get. Information at some point throughout the year saying, yes, we're still maintaining that eighty, probably during the budget process, when you give us your annual report type.
Yeah.
Good, so the priority I'm creating is on your watch, you want to make sure your assets are placed on a timely basis, and your condition of your pavement. Maintenance and the level that that's what you can get.
It's way cheaper to do it that way long-term than to let stuff deteriorate, yes.
Very clear from all of this, that's an expectation, doesn't necessarily have to be a hard goal that's identified with that assumption.
I.
Great conservation.
I would also, uh, now that we've approved the ADA transition plan, that will be referenced through the budget process of, uh, performance measures, also if he didn't want to have that on here.
Oh, right, do we need to have that still as a goal? It.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. Probably not, because it's now a plan that'll.
Plan.
That will work the plan.
Will work the plan and it'll be budget related.
Great. Excellent. Okay, so I think it's a little bit of ability, workability, written a couple notes that we had had in our conversations. Uh, age friendly community initiative was the first, and that was. Conversation about recognition for age friendly businesses and working in coordination with the chamber, looking at how to work in brochure. So it's still something that it's important to have, we've had progress in many quick observations, so.
So there has been progress, they've had, um, multiple meetings between the Sherwood. From the senior center and the Chamber of Commerce, and, um, they're developing a brochure. Um, for end recognizing age friendly businesses, so this I would say is complete, I'm sure there's other things that can happen. Towards the age friendly community initiative, or that can just be undertaken with the senior center, I mean, that's really the focus of their board, a lot of what they're working on. Um, so up to all of you guys, I know it's a priority, we can leave it on here and, and update it with another way to measure it. If we want to do that, I would just need, want to talk to my.
If we completely is this deliverable.
Yeah.
Put off, but I would certainly welcome.
Coming back with something else.
Whatever.
Okay.
Beyond the ones.
I think that.
Or if they have something. Some type of age friendly community initiative.
We're gonna put something. Next up on.
We did just have a meeting Wednesday, my notes are out in the car, but. The committee did discuss four, or five, seven, eight goals for the year.
Okay. We can bring those back then.
It's related, and, and they're not all related to age friendly, so yeah, you could, you could probably remove this piece.
Okay.
That's something, we will clarify that out. Okay, and then you all had talked about working out with the interconnected, the adblockability of the trail system, which I'll be glad your system. That included obviously the construction recently that you had Peter Trail, um, and continuing looking at phase two and looking at opportunities, is that. The right steps, do you feel like you're on the path, so to speak, for interconnected?
I, I have a question, and hope I'm not getting too burdened weeds, but. In our code today, like, we're building a new neighborhood, we require common spaces, trails, is there anything in our code that's requiring that those. Subdivisions are interconnected, because we've ensured on the west or the east side, we have some pockets where it's not connected with anything else, are we? I just want to make sure our trail system.
Yeah.
It's not just for the neighborhood, but gets people around the entire city.
Yeah, there, there's code, uh, that can allow the city to require connections subject to a lot of caveats, I guess, if they don't control the property, we can't force them. To go through another property, for example, so, uh, yes, it's in the code, the, the teeth are there, but there's some things to pay attention to, to actually, you know.
But we could force them to build the path or trail up to the property.
At a hundred percent, yes, that they have, they have to look at future connectivity, existing and future and build to that, yes.
Yeah.
Based on what the overall master plan looks like.
Okay.
Good. I think we were able to effectively.
If that's there, then.
So obviously, we can strike first one.
The, the, um, Brooklyn area, Eric, there, that's still, be, part of that's still to be built by the developer, right?
For the trail system? Uh, developers have, for the most part, been building the trail system with the development, there was one where they didn't do the, the trail system. Uh developers have, for the most part, been building the trail system with the development. There was one where they didn't do the the trail system because the um. Brookman trunk line is going through there and then the trail goes on top. Um but we got a fee and we got a fee and loop for that trail section. So the city's going to have to come back and do that section.
Oh, there you go.
What I did for a note, I hope that's okay. Trail and interconnectivity, explore uh the requirements that we have on development. So it's just for if there is something. All right, so uh I apologize. I know that some of it I know well that's pointing in the wrong spot, but let's talk a little bit about providing monitoring of our housing. To accommodate the stage system, something else that we need to put in place. So assess and monitor the diversity by tracking. Did we get or we're going to be giving a house report?
Next, I guess we are.
The next council meeting, I believe it's scheduled in a work session for this last year's uh housing report. So. If that's something you want on here, that's great, or we can actually catch it through the budget process through a performance metric of some sorts if uh you wanted to remove it. We just need to be consistent in providing that at the beginning of the year over here.
Hopefully state law. State law, we gotta do this.
So.
I'm interested to remember the conversation last year on that. Any quick thoughts? You all have. Connections with builders that are interested in the area and have some of these conversations. Feel for is there a city doing everything it can to really look and understand what are development trends? Now it's going to come in place. So obviously, build to rent is a new concept that is coming across the country, but it can create a very brutalist style that comes to it. How do we feel about that? What does the industry feel? Are they telling you that they want that or not? Are you having those conversations?
I think this one will will definitely ramp up here. Like we need, I think this one needs to stay. Do a better job.
I I think it might be important to have this to go into that section of some work session, a work session on this because. That build a rant thing is becoming a huge problem. For instance, in Phoenix where they got. Private equity firms coming in and building whole neighborhoods just to rent. You know, and. Personally, I think we should be promoting homeownership. Finding out, you know, figuring out ways to make it more affordable. So I think having. Some conversations about what our goals, what the outcomes and metrics look like for that trying to promote would be important.
I don't know if this is the right place for this or not, but something that's been. Kind of spinning in my head is the idea of going back to collaboration. We've got. Habitat for Community that's in our communities. We have the Bowman House program that's in the communities. So being able to collaborate effectively with those entities to help build up, again, going back to affordability. If we're working with those partners, we have more options there. And if we can then work with the the development communities to engage with those partners. We can do more together.
Putting the next one, but yeah, really needs to be thought.
Are are there tools cities be? Creating or implementing. Borrowing from others to. Back this rent, build a ramp. Neighborhood trend.
Yeah, but like.
Have a conversation.
There there's cities that have code that says that these have to be owned or occupied, right? I mean, I don't know if it's an HOA that does that or if it's a, you know, whatever, but. I mean, Venice is having that problem in Italy because it's essentially become an Airbnb community. So all their. Public schools are collapsing, their hospitals are collapsing, you know, and stuff like that. And so it's. It it's a problem and people are saying, hey, we gotta look at.
Right, but but there's potentially, well, definitely a difference between short-term Airbnb rental.
Yeah.
Uh properties versus um communities that are intended to be corporate. Rental space. Uh so I don't know. I mean, I I have certainly ideas of ways I think we could do it if um if we don't get preempted, but um I think it.
Yeah, and I I I think I'm with the mayor as well on that, that um. I I would prefer homeownership, but rentals are also, you know, uh they need to be an option. Uh for that's where it's like the variety is key on the, and we talked about it here, the diversity. Because, you know, I can see myself going back to a rental at some point as well, but I. Uh for those who want to get on the path to homeownership, we've got to have that that ramp, so.
And I think I I agree rentals, I mean, they're. Not everybody can get to the homeownership. I think it's the whole like rental community, like the whole, like this whole developments, you know. Here we have pockets of rentals within our ownership community. I think that's always going to be.
And I, is there a way to, I I don't know, I haven't really researched this, but I know that we had a problem with a. A group from out of state coming and saying, hey, it's a thousand dollars more a month now, or else you're out and they jack the rents up. It can't reach, yeah, is there a way that we could say, hey? We gotta, a- and again, I don't know that.
That's also state law.
We we looked into that when that issue occurred. We can look into it again, but. We don't have a lot of control over, we can't do rent control, my understanding. Um but it just.
Portland seems to be able.
Feels like there's something here. We should have a work session.
We should have a session, but yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I agree.
Really. So I think we'll have actively participated in, let's say, a little bit of that, so we can do part.
That work session would really be really great for me as well because it it helps me. Speak with a stronger voice and it's not just me, but my counsel. This is our goals and objectives.
And I think also with the industry being there or working on that, because so often I hear, but we have to build it this way in order to make our. You know, our money or our stakeholders, whatever, and part of me wants to say, but what if we didn't have to build, you know, with the. All of the red tape or whatever it is that you is causing it to be so expensive. If we didn't have to do.
You know, the average profit margin on a house that's being sold in in the the region is right now.
I don't.
Twenty-five percent.
Yeah, so if you only made twenty-two percent, could we make this?
Historically, you know, before COVID, it was under twenty.
Yeah.
So so don't, you know.
So I know, but that's, but that's just it. It's like, I want to, I want to be a partner with them because they're the ones that are swinging the hammers, actually. Okay, all right, but I.
You have to know that why it's important to have a broader conversation about what is really the industry market, what is the expectation, all of that. So I love it, you kind of scope it. This is going to be the piece of these products that we come up with, how do we need to.
Okay.
Thank you for that. Okay, as I go, now we're going to move a little bit to public art, community art. So it includes investing in community enhancements. And our for that, that included the investments you have in the arts fund. Part of that was your updated public art master plan to uh look at the funding model and the restricted T L T funds dedicated. Is that all?
That one's done.
What's up?
I think that was done.
Okay. And next.
I'm sorry, real quick. I think the only thing would be, there's been conversations about the big, the T L T.
I think.
I want to have a.
I I want to, I want to have a conversation on T L T dollars, but I want to be clear, we need to fund public art. I'm not saying we don't fund it. But I think we are getting a lot of feedback from. Businesses that art is not a tourism generator. So. Do we need, I think we need to be more fungible with those funds.
So the T L T needs to be a separate conversation.
Yeah. Yeah.
Happy to have a conversation.
I'd actually add that as a goal within them, so. Have a conversation.
Art will be, can be a tourist destination.
I'm not against having the art funding. That's not what I'm trying to, yes. This might be better ways to fund it, so.
Yep.
Thank you for that. And then we talked about identify prioritizing different investments and. You know, it's a great point and you have a number of different ways that you can. Show and showcase different parts, expressions. That could be through large art pieces, treatments of specific areas that you have interact parts or basically fun. But you continue to have some programs that you identify, continue to work with the the roundabout arts. And so you have, so you have some great aesthetic treatments that you're doing, you have some large art in the area. Do you feel like there is a set program where you have a sense of how you're going about this? Are you touching all of these different ways that you can? Bring up, did you bring up special events versus another? You know, like.
We're barely crawling so far on public art. We're we're barely crawling with public art. We're working on it. It's still.
I think, I think what we need to do is we need to set an annual budget and a funding mechanism. And then we have, yeah, the public art submission, who then can work within that budget to make recommendations on how they want to spend that money.
And. And that's another work session to be identified. I think on top of that too is. Because two of the bigger art projects we've talked about are really not in our E D zones, right? So and I'm not saying every art project has to be, but. As part of that work session, talking about outcomes in terms of how does that public art help us drive uh livability, economic development, those types of things, like what are we doing in our downtown core, those types of things. Otherwise, I would argue that the sales we put up are art, but we just, I think that needs to be part of the analysis.
If they were.
If they weren't beige, I might agree with.
No, I think we can rework that whole thing and split it out a little bit different because I think the programs are very separate than actual public art, which is what I think my council wants to.
So you all then talked about, let's make sure investing in the parks and public gathering spaces. That included looking at some design concepts to see for the similar sort of flexibility you had. That you are filling it and then you're obviously looking at revaluing the P U D over one of the digits. How do you feel on that? Is that be to be updated knowing that you've done some progress and you now have other commitments or any other adjustments?
So that's being done along with the strategic plan, yeah, so.
So we're going to keep it as.
It's not done, yeah.
The pad over there.
Correct, yeah, I think it needs to stay on here, yeah.
That's quite young. You had brought up about looking at firing properly and sure request. Making sure that we have. That's still something. And I know you're looking at your dress company. Excellent. You all good, okay?
Jeff, Dan has some. I'm sorry, Dan.
Sorry. Um going back to the livability and workability, um I'm just curious, uh maybe pulling the council, like. Who would be in favor of like taking that next step for climate action plan, including that in that area?
I'm sorry.
Uh a climate action plan. Like, we, what are, what are some thoughts on that to see if that's worth. Spending staff time.
I I have thoughts.
So again, you say Twalox and Tiger, a number of other communities that incorporate that uh looking at it within other planning documents that they have.
Correct.
But at the same time, there needs to be something that's concrete for your Sherwood. Can you quick observations?
Well, first of all, it's Tiger. Pigged.
Hi guard. He doesn't have to know that Aloha doesn't pronounce.
There you go. That's fair enough, fair enough. Uh. Dan said something about this that I think is really important that I hadn't thought about before. But if we want to go out, there's certain grant programs where we have to have a client action plan in place. Um my only comment is, let's do things that are practical, pragmatic, and actually move the dial. I'm not interested in greenwashing or fancy statements that don't mean anything in terms of what a city can actually do on this.
Absolutely. And just to be cognizant of how busy the sound is. So you know, to me, I think. We should start this process. I think I'd like to hear staff come back and say what we think achievable goals are. It may just be discovery, but that's fine. So we got to start the process, so.
We've already somewhat taken some steps because of the climate. Friendly. Yeah, recently, right?
Yeah, I think C F E C has taken some steps that would likely come in under a climate action plan if we developed one. So sure, I think we've already done some things, but um yeah, it's. Depending on where the council lands scoping um research this year, staff can handle. Although just putting my political hat on, I would have, some of the requirements of C F E C have nothing to do with climate.
Correct. I think there's ways to do some research and discovery yet, but again, I'm always like, why reinvent the wheel? There's people around us who have plans that could be components. Not all their plan, but components of plans that could fit into our plan.
Sure, and the timing, I think, works because like the big opportunity I see coming up on this is like getting solar. Public Works Building, you know, there's grant programs around that that they require, so.
And in fact, there's even some, you know, in the new housing areas in Sherwood West, having the the new houses be solar ready is literally, you know, again.
It's a, it's a building code requirement now.
Right, but the, but those are the kinds of things that don't add a ton of cost to the house, but could allow us to go for grants. So. Some of those kinds of things I think are low hanging fruit that we just got to grab and say, hey, we're. We're building for the future a little bit here.
So just, just for context, A, it's already in the building code requirement and we can't adopt a different building code. Than the state building code.
Okay, we can, we can figure it out on other areas. That that may have been a bad example, but the. But other areas like that where I I hear other cities doing it, saying, hey, we're um. We're, we're doing this as to encourage generator ready or whatever. So anyway.
I'll make sure those stats I will. Look at all of the different tools that might be available.
Yeah, I think there's good opportunity with Sherwood West also a sustainable uh infrastructure that will tie into this, so.
Anything else? Great, great. Thank you for bringing it up.
Yeah.
All right, all right, one more. Okay, uh this, last year we recently um started an adopt a trail program for our trail system here in Sherwood. We're. Going to start with just a few and see how that goes, potentially expand it to more additional ones. The city council currently owns the adopt a road for street right here and. It isn't maintained by us. And I'm wondering if we still want to have our name on it? And if so, can we figure out? I guess some goals on our plan to maintain it? And if not, then can we really sit, let somebody else take it over?
Yeah, I mean, it has been maintained by council. It's been probably three years since we did it. Um I've, I've done it many years, probably my first. Four or five years on council, we always did a one-year cleanup on there. We just haven't. Um Tammy puts the. Message out and I don't think anybody responds. So.
That's what I've noticed as well.
We usually did it on the um solve day.
Yeah.
Trash cleanup day.
Oh, and it's up to you. I mean, there's. There's a lot of other things you do to volunteer. If you want to, there's other organizations and people that would take it on. Don't want to have that handed responsibility? And if you do, great.
I'd rather see us doing things to encourage other organizations, whether it's trails or streets, to take these things on. We can help promote it.
I'd be okay with releasing it because.
Want us to switch it on or?
If we're not actively doing something with it, then yes, but if we're actively going to do, do it, then I'd be a favor of people.
I think that's cyclical depending on the council about the time, right?
Most of it was, most of it's maintained by civil district and private properties, this is. But generally.
Trails, HOAs too.
Whatever.
Unfortunately, you're not allowed to come up with any other ideas. We've run out of.
Good thing we're moving to public safety.
Exactly.
Let's fill that page up.
Okay, I should mention so to all of the council, like I've been debating, you all have stressed. Now, while going through all of these different pieces, they import some. That's always important. So while we look at different notes or the citizens might be watching, but they don't know which. So as we go through continuing the police crew cycle, I think that's a great. Always been a huge issue. The challenge is only wrong as time goes on.
Yeah, excuse me, I think that's going to be the ongoing challenge, is it's always evolving, people are being creative, uh. I know we've worked, uh, and we stay in touch with our neighbors to try and stay in tune as to what's going on out there. I knock on wood because we're in a great place, but I know we can't. Uh, be complacent in that, we, we have to be proactive and what's coming, uh. Obviously, what drives this is contracts within. The departments, incentives, and some of those kind of things that patrol gets, because. That's just human nature, everybody's looking to see what everybody else is getting, and then it comes back to us, so I think we've done a really good job. Um, I don't know how much we've used LinkedIn, uh, as far as a source, I I think we've been pretty creative and. Aggressive in in our outreach, but, uh. Yeah.
Yeah, that's no problem. How is the lateral? What is the?
It's, uh, ebbs and flows, I think, so the challenge that. Has been has, uh, just, it's a historical challenge in the fact that getting a lateral. You number one, you take on somebody that you don't totally know why they're leaving, and what are they giving up and what are they going to get in return, and that's always been our biggest battle, and so. I I know, uh, Councilor Mace talked about kind of the carrot out there earlier in some of the. Things that are going on, but that's, that's what we have to be creative in is, what is it going to be that we're going to offer that's going to have? A four or five year officer step away from a, an agency and and come to us. We have a lot of great programs, I mean. Uh, I think we're, we're light years ahead in a lot of ways, um, and so we do a lot of good things, it's just. I think, uh, the communication and being out there and the outreach is, is also important.
Seems like you're thinking ahead, you have other vigilance. And it'll be done here, I can't go about it. A lot that you have.
And nimble comes to mind, uh, and just, I know you know this, Chief, but. If you, if you get into an area where you need our help, please tell us. As you, as you're continuing to make this a place people want to come to. Yeah, thank you.
Is that first one, that that seems like it's going to be an ongoing thing, have, is it something we still need in our goals, or Chiefs? Doing that as hard as the higher profession.
I think it's going to be an ongoing, I mean, we just got, somebody's going to retire this next year, so it's, we got to start planning, uh, for that soon, Chief Will. Yeah, unfortunately, it's just cyclical, I mean, I know through retirements in twenty twenty five, um, and as I've preached and you've heard. I mean, you. No, no, um, you're twelve to fifteen months out, it's just the beast that we can never overcome in law enforcement as far as. Uh, hiring, um, and so, you know, knowing that and being creative, obviously the laterals cut some of that down, but, uh. The availability of good people, and and I've said this since I've been in this seat, is we're not going to compromise. Our standards just to get, uh, a body in a seat, so sometimes it does take us longer, but, uh. I think this is just going to be ongoing, and with Sherwood West coming, it's going to be here before we know it, so we've got to start thinking and preparing and. Seeing what that's going to look like for us.
That was my thought is, is the goal. One of the goals under public safety is the forward thinking, preparing for Sherwood West. What that potentially could look like as far as a staffing plan. Or, as, I mean, we budget five year out, if Sherwood West is going to start coming online in five to seven years. Are we planning for that?
Yeah, I, I think we, we're doing a lot of that now, we're very well aware of. Which offices we have, and if we can predict, uh, retirement cycles, so actually, we. We sit down pretty regularly and look at all the names we have on the board, we know their lengths of service, and we know where we have our pockets of. In. Two, three years' time, we're going to have a gap, and we really need to be focusing on getting some laterals in, so we have people who. Are are backfilling our promotions, and so I think we're already doing that, we probably are. Really in the initial stages of kind of that Sherwood West. Planning, but even for what we have now, we know that we are going to have some holes in experience coming up, which is why. The focus going forward is going to be back on laterals. We've got some new officers coming in from the reserve program. But as people promote up, as we get senior officers and sergeants and captains retiring, we have to backfill those, so I think it's still an important. Focus for us, but I think we're definitely spending a lot of time on it.
I, I, I would just, I would just add to that, um, I think, uh, as we move forward with Sherwood West, if it's five years, whatever that number is. I think, uh, Chief and his team's probably going to need some help with some sort of an assessment to, put some money to have a consultant come in. Identify, uh, which could be a goal. Yep. I mean, I just want to make sure the chief's got it, that covered.
That's, that was my thought, because I think the last staffing plan we did was probably eight, seven years ago, eight years ago.
Yeah.
It was right when I was coming on council, so sixteen, um. And it didn't address anything in that Sherwood West area, so.
That's when I was, at the beginning, when I mentioned operationally, I just think we need to actually be thinking about that and have. Uh, folks help the chief make some of those decisions as we move forward before we bring something to you.
The ratio of. How the land is developed. Residential versus.
Want to throw out here, um, not just staffing at Sherwood West, but also. Are there infrastructure requirements, like, do we need to? Make, uh, the roads easy for the police to, uh, patrol, and example of that, it's like we have that little cutout. At on ninety nine, where someone could sit. A car could sit, do we, I just want to make sure we're not just looking at staffing, but we're looking at other, other areas where public safety and design. Uh, come into place on that, um, do we need? The other area is, do we need to? Add an item here about elevating the traffic safety committee to report directly to council.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and elevating, so right now, the traffic safety committee reports to our. Our police advisory, elevate that to report directly to council. And the last one, and it, but this may be also a question for the chief, I would love to see the citizens academy come back. When you're ready.
You know, we've given it a try a couple of times, we just haven't. Quite have the applicants, but it's, it's still on the table.
Okay.
Mayor, um, it, it, it's part of the infrastructure, is there, um, is there enough room for expansion at the current police? Uh, building, or are we going to have to? I know.
Two in the back of that.
Well, with the public works building and everything else, do we need to plan for Sherwood West? Hey, we're going to have five new officers or whatever. But there's no place to put them, uh, like, do we have to start thinking? That we've got to replace that building or put a substation, I don't know, whatever.
It's under the category of it's not just staffing, it's, it's design, it's.
Yeah.
It's, I was told back in the day when we built that. It was designed in such a way that we could expand on that site.
Pretty easy. Yes, uh, as I understand it, yeah, it's just, there's actually a closet magic door that will push out into the new section, so, uh. This, I think that's correct, Craig.
Yeah, so we're like, um, on one side of the building where there's the tree, as you go back into the back, that is supposed to be able to expand out.
Okay. Right, awesome.
You tell me, I'm thinking in the interest of time, I'd just like to hear comprehensively with. Collaboration on the school district for efforts to increase, so. Obviously, the sick off school program, you're moving to that next phase. Maintaining the S R O program at this point. Uh, looks like that's continuing and then looking at elements of enhancing schools, I feel like. We're on the right, there are still priorities and a way to approach. Working with the school district. We've got that in where the, the staffs approach on these.
I, I mean, I would say on the first one. I'm going to assume we're, we're probably going to identify of all one project that might make it on this list besides the. The other two. Feel a little bit more like. Candy operations.
I agree.
I, yeah, and I would, on the smart goal for number one, maybe expand that a little bit to address what Doug just said, and. You know, we're looking at, uh, pedestrian safety across the whole city with the focus on schools right now, so. It's not just the one school.
And. I think it's not, well, I mean, it's not necessarily through this safe route to school program, I think. Our conversation this year is just going to be about safety in our school zones, period, overall.
Yes, it's almost like safe for us, the school should be a bullet. And under the smart goals, and it should be more of a general, making sure students can get to and from school safely.
Yeah.
And that's a weird partnership a little bit, because when you go to pick up kids at the school, the high school at least. You're not sure if it's the school district's fault or the city's engineering fault as to why there's so much traffic. Right, but that's, that's it.
Too many parents want to pick up their kids.
Well, yes, but. But even so, but, but, but part of that is, you know, is there something we can do in partnership, or is this just a fact of life? We're always going to have.
It's always going to be three hundred fires.
Search traffic, not going to build a road.
Well, okay, but when we were on the bond oversight committee, the idea was is that that back road. Was going to be open. For buses, or not just for buses, for parents as well and students.
That was not what we, how we designed it when I was on the school design, it was always designed not to be open.
Yeah, competing.
I know one thing with the school district, they have that one mile walk radius zone where you have to walk, so like where I currently live, if my kids were going to Middleton. They'd have to walk there. And that's a significant, that's almost by the hotel. They could, they're not required, the walk zone can't go over railroad tracks or state highway.
That's why they could walk to Middleton from his house.
Yeah, which is, you know, you're talking about a. The fifth grader, or fourth grader, third grader trying.
Oh, I thought you meant to getting to the high.
No, no, not getting to the high school, but I'm just saying it's, yeah.
And that's why we have to, we need, we need to focus, uh, but I, just for people listening, I just want to make sure people understand. The city did, did not design those roads around. High school, that was the county, I just want to make sure that people. Or, yes, exactly.
So if we, is, what I think I heard from some of the fellow council members was the idea of. The school resource officer is a maintaining program. Once that comes off this list. Do you have a tickler as staff to maintain? That is a priority for you all.
Yeah, I, 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 that's going to be a priority for us, so, and it will be for the chief too. It'll come up through the budget process.
Taking it out of the budget, uh, council would be like, whoa.
They were to change that, that becomes.
As we, as we grow, I think, isn't there a desire to have more S R Os?
Now, we're at two right now.
We're at two, correct.
The level service added, one was sure, level services.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks.
So as they go through budget, yeah, people want, maybe change their level service.
Thank you.
I think under the traffic safety committee, getting that to report to council, one of the. Smart goals, I guess, would be also identifying a council liaison.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
That was okay with that? Okay, so, uh, next we have a chance probably to talk a little bit about community health, homeless. Then so now policy. Uh, that manifests itself in some other ways, right, it's the issue of homelessness. So, what you had in the past, staff's approach was involving me and other partners. Work with the county and others to ensure that people identify where the issues are, the outreach budget. Do we feel like we have a free.
For staff, that's a hard word to measure. Did I see it more as a value, potentially, than a goal, unless we're going to have some specific outcomes. Like tied to our new. Homeless coordinator or. Outrage, I guess, we have a hard time reporting out kids, everybody works on it in different. Ways.
It's, it's kind of, it's a, a visionary statement about our commitment to it, I, I would love to keep this on here just for the sole reason. As we work through. Reauthorizing the supportive health services bond at the metro level.
Yeah.
You know, because this is the one of the things we're talking about, as far as getting funding to cities for mental health resources and, like, the way you just mentioned. So showing that that's something that we're doing and we're committed to, it's just helpful.
And then there's a big lawsuit that's working its way through. To. Assets that can be deployed based on emergency calls in the metro region. So, it's going to be interesting.
Is there a goal around? Literally the reporting out, I didn't read this initially as. Mental health things that are a reason for homelessness, right? We have elderly people, we have, you know, middle aged people, whatever, that are lonely, right, and so the senior center could be doing a program for that, or they're. So I know, right, but that's what I'm saying, is maybe identifying and saying. Hey, here are the mental health things that are going on in Sherwood. We're, we're farming these things out because we don't have these resources, but the things that we can address from the library and from the senior center and stuff. These are the programs that we're doing to help people who are in this area that we can do something about. And I, I feel like that might be.
Yeah.
Where you could grab a goal and say, hey, we're doing five things this year that are helping.
Are you, are you saying a goal to identify that stuff for a goal to list them in here?
No, identify them, identify them first, but I'm saying, but then we could say, okay, well. It's a priority to this council to address. These things that have been identified, right, maybe, I don't know. Go.
What we've got is, um, so absolutely keep your goal. Have staff develop those deliverables to me, make sure you're comfortable with those.
Yeah, I was just going to add, maybe this needs rewarded, involve the community, it doesn't seem like this has been on here for a while. I think we can rework this to say, identify. What we are doing, identify what we're not because somebody else is doing, and do we have any gaps? Are there any holes? That, um, and that is reaching out to the governor, government, other government partners, just not sure the community piece, which I think has been brought up. Multiple times in different work sessions back upon that, so, I'm not exactly sure, maybe Renee has some ideas.
Possibly keep community wellness and mental health awareness as the, the key piece there. But with Megan's expertise, and yes, she has a background in houselessness, but with her being involved in the, the three cities now. She might be a great resource to pull together maybe a, an action committee that will address this issue. With some other stakeholders, such as the Pearl Program at the Senior Center, or the program that's. Uh, that's happening at the police departments, those types of things, so that that's front and center, because it is community facing.
Yeah.
Better back where it was last year in livability and workability, rather than pure public safety. Because obviously, there's the M H R T. That's very specific, but it seems like a lot of programs have been discussed that they're doing at the senior center and.
Actually, with it, with the schools feels more.
Livability than public safety. It just almost feels wrong too, like, hey, you have mental, mental health needs.
A public.
It's public safety, kind of.
Yeah, unless you call, yeah, if you call it public health and safety, maybe, I don't know, but.
I know, it can, but it could go on either, either space.
Just feel like the messaging, you know, if you were someone who lived with depression or anxiety, or had a, a mental health need in that respect. To have it sitting under public safety.
We also need to promote what we're doing, I mean, that write up in the Oregonian was amazing, what we're doing at the senior center.
Yeah.
Uh, we're, because we are doing a lot of amazing things.
We're doing our bit, but a lot of it just needs to be done by others, because that's.
Well, and if we promoted more, it might bring more people out of, more organizations or capacity out of the woodwork that would help in. The aid of.
Well, it helps, uh, combat at regional political level too, that this, per se, and Sherwood doesn't have any problems. You know, and doesn't need funding, so.
Hey, Mayor. The, the one thing, uh, and it was brought up by the sheriff the other night, is, uh, M H R T in our coverage, I think a goal for us. Would be to somewhere get to twenty four hour coverage on that in the south cities, not just as. A Sherwood entity, but we've found a great deal of success with our South Cities team. But they're a one to eleven, and we know by data that we have a lot of behavioral mental health issues. Early on in the morning, um, before we have teams available, so if we were going to park anything here, that's, I mean, I think that would be of. Some kind of benefit down the road to see if we can close that gap, because although the sheriff's office says they have it, we know that. They're stretched then as well for the resources.
So maybe add a goal that's work with our other south.
Yeah, Tiger and Walton, yeah.
To expand the hours of our M H R T.
Yeah.
Like I said, what's.
E, M H R T.
It's out there, it's inevitable, in my opinion.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, it's, it's inevitable.
Right, I think that, you know, the police department does a great job at the publicizing of this, but. Publicizing that, that mental health team, response team is available and all the other, like, that is what I think helps us to get the funding and, or at the very least. I, I think if the average citizen knew that, because so often that, you know, the successful de-escalation of somebody having a mental health crisis. A hundred percent doesn't make the news, right? And so it looks like, oh, we're spending this money for these teams and in reality. You know, we're not getting anything from it because to the mayor's point, nobody has mental health concerns in Sherwood. Nobody has, you know, all these other things, you know? We don't have crime here. Why do we even have a police department? It's like, well, you, you, you don't, you don't hear about it all, right?
She puts together for us.
Yeah, and so, so I, I feel like there is a, a, a line that needs to be walked there of saying. You know, we're doing it right and we'd like to do it more right. You know, we'd like to be able to. To offer the, you know, these are the kinds of calls that we respond to on the mental health crisis and. Uh, here's what we could do to fund it more.
We'll get to the training engagement.
Yeah.
Can, can I just add one more thing onto it? You know, traditionally, if you go back in time, these are services that the counties and the city, and the state provided. We've seen over the last decade, the state completely locked up on that. Counties are trying to pick it up. That's why, that's why the metro region adopted the S H S tax to help deal with some of this stuff. Um, so it's a real issue for cities having to pick up the slack. Let's go, look at it. So I like the aspect of, we need to work with our regional partners on this. You know, the county, you know, that I've heard him in meetings I've had on S U test, well, we're giving you money for M H R T. My response was, yeah, but we're not getting, we don't have full coverage, you know, so. It's good to elevate these things.
Yeah.
And surely adding something to the drop.
Hey, gee.
Tiny bit of money.
Yeah. The recent hire that we did that we're getting the twenty five percent sharing with the other cities, is that? Does the county take that into consideration for their coverage?
Yeah.
Uh, um, you, you, are you talking about Megan?
Is that the?
Yeah, so she's completely separate from M H R T.
Um, but she's complimentary because we've actually utilized her this week in dealing with those things. So we are seeing some benefit to it, but it's not associated with M H R T.
Okay.
That's through the supportive housing.
All right, so, uh, so encouraging pedestrian bicycle driver safety, we can talk some through this, so anything else that we need to rub it all, go ahead, where. You had some of that conversation a little earlier, I'll see if we tie it to this, but right now we talk about looking at ways we're gonna improve on county owned roads. And then within school, that's what you all were elaborating on. Anything else you all showing progress on this? Are you feeling, got this down?
It probably covered, but it's when we look at. Sherwood West and the master planning and street designs, there's. Um, undoubtedly enhancements to the, the design to be, be better. Bump outs, intersections, but. But it's, you know, on a safe spot, so you'd be seeing when they travel across.
Sherwood area, so under designed destruction and streets slash pedestrian safety. And seen overall, can you say the glad? Core function of all, so that included your police reserve program, have that in place. That, that's outstanding.
Since we have it, doesn't mean it'll be on the list.
That's a maintenance thing.
Both these things.
Yeah. So. Any quick thoughts?
That's where, that's where the traffic, that's where the traffic safety committee went to land. Okay.
So Doug, were you suggesting that we remove those since it's more, everybody get with that? Okay. And add traffic safety.
Yeah.
And so one of the things we'll want to remind everybody, talk is as we do the. Pillars and then we have the deliverables. Uh, you have an assumption that you're going to maintain a high quality service, all of these. So as we. Momentum, this is more for every good question on this, but so just your others, yeah, these, some of these more functions. Your, we have a high standard. If there is something to change, then it has to be discussed.
Right. I mean, the second one. Removing it, it says working a report for end of the year, which I think is coming. I think I saw that, so, yeah.
First meeting.
Yep.
Yeah, yep, let's check up the table. And I see, and then add a traffic safety.
Thank you, great conversation. But one typical responsibility. Goodness, so you, thank you, Mayor, for teaming this up early, it's. You all, so resourceful and looking at under every map of where there might be opportunities to be helped by, so. Booking and grant opportunities, partnerships, all of them, it's going to be, like, really done. Challenge gets to structurally, you have issues and you're not alone in that. But one of the questions is how are we going to go about it? You have a long range financial forecast. That's wonderful to have. Next question goes to, how does that forecast start to infuse staffing needs, master plan requirements and different things like that? Uh, just some quick observations is you definitely have some challenges ahead of you, uh, but I love that you got your ideas. So within that, you do talk about pursuing federal and state grants and at all of us, where you have a great story to tell there. Want to continue that, I think it is personally worth worrying because the. Many of the federal and state grants have set time frame and so you always want to be resourceful with them. Any quick observations on, to like the approach and.
I just have a couple, just quick ones. Uh, the nine million dollars actually should be under federal because that's technically federal funds. It's just being, um, pulled out by the state, um, for the broadband stuff. I don't know if we should mention. Just for completeness or outside reading this, the, the EPA grant we got, uh, and then just reiterate. Going, potentially going up for a grant. For that, um. On the innovation side, I would like to see something we add here and, and let me talk a little bit more about what I'm talking about. And I'll, I'll use an example of another city. So, uh, Long Beach, California has something they call Pitch Long Beach and they. And I encourage you all to take a look at it. It's really an interesting program. And they just, they define all the outcomes they're looking for, and I'll give you a specific example, like one of their outcomes was reducing their fleet maintenance costs. And then they invited vendors to come in and just pitch ideas. And a vendor came in and pitched the idea of putting prior tire pressure monitors on all the cars with central monitoring. And they were able to catch tires that were slowly leaking and replacing them or fixing them before the tire got destroyed. In that particular case, they reduced their annual maintenance costs. Don't quote me on this, like, I think it was like almost five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, so it's a great example of we don't know. What all the solutions are that are out there. So setting up something. That encourages us to, I don't think it takes a huge amount of work, may explore how we do this, but just here's the outcomes we're looking at. Here's the areas we're looking at finding efficiencies and savings. And inviting vendors to come in and tell us, here's ways we can help you with that. And we don't have to. Take them all, take all comers, we just. We can vet through that and decide, oh, that's a good one, let's go do that, so.
So kind of clear now, something says, look at. The various ways to explore innovative ways to minimize our. Most be process improvements, the other would be, be, uh, you know, they show it's like vendor pitch, they all be checking how that's.
Yeah, the, the Craig, you mentioned like the A I plan review that could fall into that category. Um, just one quick example, cause it's so dainty cool. Uh, there's a city in California that is doing, uh, drones as first responders. I'm not suggesting we do this. But they've reduced the number of calls of, of physical officer has to go to by thirty percent. Because a lot of times when the drone gets out there, open seven eleven, where the owner reported a fight. There's no fight that they call the owner up. They say, oh, yeah, they left. So. There's, there's just a lot of really cool stuff going on, especially in the A I space that I think we need to explore. And if we get ahead of it. And start implementing that stuff now, we, we're, we're not in catch up mode in terms of finding these savings.
So to add on to that, I, Craig, are, are the staff incentivized somehow or cowered somehow to say? Hey, spend an hour a week or a month or whatever, looking for grants in your area and, and think, because if I'm, if I'm feeling underwater already. I don't know that I'm gonna say, hey, I'm gonna pause everything to look for this. Half million dollar grant, you know what I mean? Like, I, I just, I don't know enough to know if they feel like, you know what? That is a. Part of my core function is to look for these grants and if I could tweak it to fit one of these goals, then I can go for it. Do, do, do the staff feel empowered to do that? Or is it like, you know what? That's on my list, but it's at the bottom.
I would say some staff, uh, are empowered to do that. I'd say one area that I mentioned earlier is contract management. Uh, is an area that we. Uh, need resources in, to be quite honest with you. It's really up to the department, department heads when they start looking at. Uh, innovation or into this and what's best for their, uh, departments, but I can tell you. A lot of the department heads that sit around this table are working department heads and getting the stuff done to makes, make the goals. To be able to accomplish them, right? So it's for somebody to sit around and look. I would say is not a lot of time spent on that, right? And, uh, that's an area we can improve in and I, I, I. I really think that gets back to the collaboration in departments. Uh, there's a lot of things between finance and H R that could be worked on. There's a lot of things that, uh, between police, public works that they do a great job working together, but there's some other things that we are. Currently looking at some technology that can be used by both sides. So I think there's improvements there and I, I, I. It gets back to just like the A I stuff, right? A year ago, we weren't talking a lot about A I, and it's, A I has been around for years. But there's cool things out there that might, technology wise, that might save us some, uh, resources.
Yeah, and I fully expect that, I, I mean, I'm already thinking, there's a chat G P T bot I could set up to say, hey, once a week, email me all the grants that have to do with. Broadband implementation, you know what I mean? And I could set up that and say, but again, as a city, we could. We could try to figure that out because it's a tremendous amount of work to put these grants together, but as we see, some of them pay off. And it's millions of dollars.
Well, and I think, yeah, I just want to, like, our, our lobbyists, they send us emails with grant opportunities all the time. So there are a lot of like listeners and stuff out there that are feeding those in, but what I was trying to do with the innovation is flip the script. Instead of us going, I want to do X, Y, Z and putting together a detailed R F P with all these requirements. We just go through a lot smaller effort to say, here's the outcomes we're looking for and invite vendors to come in and tell us, here's some potential solutions. So I'm trying to flip.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Mayor, right? I agree with you on that. I think that's what we did in public works. P D with this technology we're looking at, we had somebody come in and actually. Kind of show us what they had to offer, one, but how that could actually work for us, right? And, and I think there's some good opportunities. When I was talking about contract management, my bigger concern for the city, uh, is we're going after all these grants. And it's your department heads and some of finance is time that's spending actually managing these. So the people that are actually. Managing projects and doing the day to day work, they're also trying to follow the, all the laws that are behind these. We don't have one dead, dedicated person that. A purchasing procurement person. It's different departments operate differently and, uh, that's an area that we need to actually.
And that's what I was gonna say is the grant is, writing the grant is the easier part. It's the actually implementing it and making sure that you follow all of the guidelines so that you don't mess up.
Just, just like when Brad, when I read the nine million dollar B D P grant for broadband, we built into that overhead to manage the program, so. How, how do we make sure that we're building that in so we can fund and resource and manage our grants?
Great.
Yep.
All right, so we'll go through some of this will be operational, so it's more for us to be aware that there are difficult to be, last. Terms of means, I think we will want to take out such as innovation, or there's a council, like, make sure we are looking at something. So how will staff do that? We're looking through. Vendor pitch, looking at A I, sort of looking at.
And there's, there's someone, we've said many times, let's don't, let's don't reinvent the wheel. There's a lot of examples about how other cities are doing this. We just joined A F I, which is a great organization of. Uh, focus, I think you're familiar with them, that focuses on, uh, innovation and local government. So there's, there's a lot of ways we can go after this.
Get an advantage of being government, and that is, um, there's no criteria.
Yep.
Okay, so as I'm going forward on, uh, looking at fiscal responsibility, we had some investing business process improvement. So you all have talked about, you were very supportive about looking at how we could go about. Process improvements really to ensure that you're, that's why I did, I know this is important, probably brought it out. That included, we have looked at a, a banking request, so is that still a high priority and quick observation?
This was a area that I'm, I'm talking with David, there's not a lot of savings now that we actually, uh. Went to the credit card fee. Uh, that was a bigger part of that. So, um, if this is an area that you want us to look at, we're more than happy to look at, but talking with David. It's not really a high priority. I mean, we're not gonna save a lot of money.
Remember how it. Was it, I don't, this has been on, we've talked about this for a while now. I don't remember how it ever got on here, was, was.
Former city manager picked it off my whole list, to do list, so.
Okay.
Um, and really the reason why it was up there is trying to see if we could curb the. About two hundred and twenty thousand dollars we get charged in credit card fees and we address that as budget cycle.
Well, I mean, I.
All this takes for bank.
Yeah. Yeah.
If you're right, if I could look at some of what you brought up that we were saying needs to be operationalized. Remove some of the, as high of a priority and we just update this, is the bottom line, and we can reword it if necessary, but it's really. Sure, business process improvements may be, and utilize innovation. Improve efficiency and something, and then within that, we start putting some of those items to talk about.
Hey. I, I think that's right. I think on this one, it could probably come up. I think the way I think about that too, it's, it's more of a policy thing. And like, for instance, a lot of banks. You know, they'll incentivize low fees by saying you have to use me as a credit card company and you get kind of trapped yourself where. On the other side, there's vendors out there that will give you their software for free. As long as you process the credit cards through them. So there's, we just need to be thoughtful about that.
Um, so I know organizational service, service service is part of it, which we're all looking at in a couple of areas that we'll bring up in the budget process. Again, and then do we feel comfortable with the identifying long term suitable funding model?
Oh, boy, isn't that a discussion?
So.
Let's take.
Yeah.
No, any.
It needs, it needs to be a priority.
So then, before we look at, uh, being transparent and proactive in the reporting of our commission and where you've gone about that, you do quarterly budget committee meetings. Uh, as well as looking at tools like opening up your insurance, uh, now, any quick observations on that? Do we feel like the staff will.
Craig, did you have something?
I did, uh, back at invest in software enhancements. Uh, the financial software, I just like, uh. Financial software hadn't been updated since about two thousand seventeen and we're going through that right now. I'd just like David to give a quick update of where we're at and if we're actually going to need to actually do something with software. So we can either remove it or what you guys want to do with that. David, could you speak to that?
Yeah, currently we're actually live with the, the upgraded software system, but it's, it's a major change going from about a two thousand seventeen model to a two thousand twenty four-ish, is that what? Twenty four model, so you're, you're, and there's a whole different look and feel, and so we're all kind of getting used to that. There's a lot of good capabilities out of this new upgraded software system that we're gonna be looking into, again, it's still pretty green.
Is the vendor?
Um, is it Microsoft?
Same vendor.
Yeah.
It's same software, it's just there, now it's cloud software.
SaaS now, so we keep the upgrades, I could end up with this eight year old model.
It's all SaaS based, so it's.
And, yeah, we moved to cloud based. You know, one thing, I know there's been discussions behind the scenes. We, we look at, you know. Why don't we start looking at new E R P systems? Always in the back of my mind is that five year forecast and there's some cities that upgraded to Tyler technology. But when you look at our annual maintenance costs of being eleven, all right, ten to twenty thousand dollars currently moving up to about three hundred fifty to four hundred thousand dollars annually. That's gonna make a huge hit on the five year forecast. So that's always in the back of my mind. We could always look at a new financial system, but then there's gonna have to be trade. We could always look at a new financial system, but then there's gonna have to be trade offs.
Community that is entirely technology, and it was just mainstream standard. But they are absolutely rethinking that exact issue is they're finding they have one off systems that are viable, cloud based. And don't have that carrying cost just to call it the R P system with models that aren't utilized.
And currently, the system we have right now, it it's workable, we can work with it. And I'm really interested to see all the capabilities. I want to give this upgrade a chance before we really even dive into. Whether we want to go to a new E R P system or even start talking about it. Cause there's a lot of reporting capabilities in the new system that weren't in the old system to where I'm looking to streamline processes in the finance department where. If I could hire someone or we could develop reports for department heads, we're not getting interrupted on our day to day operations of. Keep telling me how much I've spent in this. What did I spend here? You know, it's you, it's all self-service departments will have that all at their fingertips.
So much of your staff's time relates to, it's not just a finance department, I mean, clearly they will. And uh and position to go issues in all of the different departments, much less the important internal departments.
Oh, go ahead.
I would just, I would, I would agree with David. I think, uh, you know, and you gotta be careful, I talked about this when you say E R P system. That could be covering every single thing you do from utility billing to permitting, et cetera. There is a strong argument for best to breed in in those silos and you, your E R P system just really gets shrunk to just finance payroll. Yeah, exactly. So I I would argue that best breeds the best way to go. I mean, Microsoft's as your, is it Microsoft as your government? Their. Their specialty is not government, but it's probably fine because you're not doing all the other best to breed stuff.
Streamlining the processes, cause you know, currently I I gotta look at, you know, limited resources I have. We only had one individual. That could run payroll and that's just too dangerous these days. And so I was really looking at how to streamline processes, but. By implementing implementing a new payroll system, I cut a halftime position, so it paid for itself.
So I just wanted to chat about that. That's a goal that's been on this uh for many years of of. Going to a new financial software system of some sort. I just kind of want to give an update of where we're at on that, so.
Probably come up.
Come up until David comes back with us with other information as to like work out whatever he's using and.
He's got a question.
So. In. Whatever universe. Are we, um and we look at efficiencies, are we? Part of that where you're about, you're gonna be evaluating like court. Court's efficient?
So in the organizational assessment that we're doing down below, hoping that some information comes out of that that'll be valuable.
Well, and this gets back to what I, what I pitched earlier about. Doing uh challenge based procurement and looking at innovation and having people come in and. And look at us and say, hey, we can help you here and could apply to courts, could apply anywhere.
As we, sorry, I stepped out to the restroom. One of the other ones on here was talking about Open Gov was up. Did you guys talk about that?
One thing it would be in the Open Gov as we move into that would be. What we can actually produce out of our new updated system if we actually need Open Gov, if there's some of the same information, if we can actually. Save twenty five or thirty thousand by putting something up on the website out of that, so that's something David is actually looking into.
I mean, it says it expired December thirty first. Did we renew or?
I'm working with them. They they want to renew us on the three years and I don't want to go three years with them. So I only want a one year contract with them. Um that's one thing and as Craig was saying. What reports can we pull out this system where if I brought in front of the either city council or the budget committee, finance committee? Would this be acceptable if this is a monthly report? We could put up on our website for transparency.
Well, yeah, I mean, I remember when we got Open Gov, one of the big things was that live. You know, on the website, but if you went and looked at how many people ever viewed it, it was like probably me and him, three others of us and. Two community, I mean, it was very limited.
It it we're not. We're not getting our money's worth.
And the stories that never took place and we're paying for stories and.
And frankly, technology is eclipsed it. I can throw, I put Metro's budget in chat G P T all the time and ask it questions and. It it gets all the information I ever need. Yeah, you don't, I think the need for that kind of thing is kind of got away.
Does we still need that on here as a goals? I mean, we're, David's evaluating it.
No, I'm evaluating it and then once I talk with uh Craig and we. You know, whether we have a work session or bring it in front of the finance budget committee, um I just want to see what the, we could take it off for now.
Yeah.
It's just been on there for many years.
Right, cause we've been talking about it, like, do we still need this? Is this a resource? But we were in a contract, so now we're not. We have the opportunity to like. Say, hey, no, we're done.
Okay, so believe anything else real quick that you want to bring up on fiscal responsibility? There were some items before you got to it that you had.
I think it was a goal that we got implemented. Yeah, it's done, cause it was something we wanted. David put that in motion.
I think we talked about December and February.
Just make it part of the operational. This is making Doug happy.
Let's add some.
So, uh let's see, I believe first was improve effective communication and modernize our citywide interaction. And obviously, you're you're going through the process through three to twenty five for your website platform. Uh also, you're utilizing all these different tools, surveys, text messaging, which you talked a little bit later about on surveying to solicit feedback. Uh so the hope is that within a website that you have a new engagement platform, you'll have some of that. And then looking at other pieces, refining your marketing and branding. So real quick, let's just make sure, are we still on track? Does this seem like there is the progress that you were looking for when you had this goal?
To me. I'm I'm kind of, the last one here feels like two different things. In one column, we're saying improve engagement and communication. The other one was saying, let's look at our marketing and branding. Right, to me. Those are related but separate.
Yeah, I see. I think that's right, so. Branding isn't necessarily tied with engagement and communication branding, it's gonna be, and it's almost a different audience, isn't it? Okay. So maybe we need something separate there for.
I think we need something separate for branding.
I agree.
Yeah, because that third one, improve engagement and communication is actually reflected in the first two goals, so if you take the. Continue to refine marketing and branding or the branding issue, that becomes a.
I get, okay. So we uh I will just, we may get to it later, but anything else? So when we talk marketing branding. I get talked about some different elements. Are we all comfortable with where you're going? And do you have any set approach behind you're gonna look at that? Is that looking at an outside?
Yes, so as far as that, I thought you were getting into something else here, so I think this is part of what we've been talking about. I've mentioned uh. Provide uh that certain set of staff member, but I also think that. How the job description was written before, there was too much on the job description that you actually need to pass somebody. Process and what we want to, what we in the city want, how our voices, how we want to be heard out there. It's just we get in the logos and all that, staff. There needs to be a priority. Time to launch it now that we have a new website. Feeding information through somebody, but right now also have in each department, if somebody. Task, we went to Facebook years ago when Joe was here and that's kind of our communication folks. And aside from when something comes up that you need to actually put something together to get into newspaper to use outside. But you really don't have somebody that's, you need somebody to open the program. That those departments can feed up to, that meet on every other month basis, providing the same message if you want to be consistent.
I think, does that need to be an employee or there's contractors that do that kind of stuff that could be a consistent person, but. Is only, you know, ten hours a month or something.
But it doesn't mean we count somebody on.
So, I completely agree. I think having a person dedicated to marketing communications. Would be huge, right? And have it all centralized, right? I think that's something missing, right? It's all piecemeal now and it's like. Oh yeah, this is like something I do occasionally as. A sidelight to really what my job is, right? Now you're having, you're talking about having someone who's like, this is their dedicated focus and they help everyone in the organization. Communicate and market more effectively. Check. The other thing is, these are two separate things to me. The 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 ongoing marketing person totally agree with that. The branding, rebranding exercise is a more separate, different skill set. One off project, probably using a consultant, getting all of our input, getting community input, right? Like. Those are just assets, those are just assets.
Then you might have support internally that makes that a reality, but that's only a portion of your job compared to all of it.
They did, there's assets that person uses, right? They use this logo instead of that one. It doesn't. I mean, the marketing person could start with our existing assets. And then when the new branding gets done, they move to the new assets. It doesn't, to me, it's completely unrelated.
I think the rebranding, while it's important with so many other competing financial things. Like a city logo, and I don't know how much that would cost to get a consultant who's gonna do all that for us. Is a lower priority to me than other things. Well, I think it's, could be.
I I would use the example, and I'm just jumping in, so I apologize, um Sherwood Broadband. One of the reasons we're so successful is is we branded that, it's consistent. And it's not just the logo, it's tone, it's how you talk to people, consistency and how they engage with us. It's across the board when you when you really look at that, so I I think it's important.
I think we've been putting it off.
Yeah.
We have, yeah.
And honestly, when you look at, I I love that we have a a nature preserve here in town. But when we talk about the future of Sherwood and where we're going. It it's, I I never hear the nature reserve as the future of Sherwood is. You know, the nature reserve, right? And so I hear gateway to wine country, I hear family friendly, I hear trails, I hear, you know, stuff like that. But I never, and so I feel like it's overdue. And if we're gonna be marketing ourselves and if we're gonna start saying, hey, businesses, you want to come to our hospitality zone. Uh or whatever it is, we've got to have that as a package that is easily digestible.
Yeah, yeah, we talk a lot about being innovative.
Yeah.
And modern and forward looking and we look like we're out of nineteen ninety three.
Yeah.
From the branding side, I I like I said, I agree, we need to actually bring somebody to help out. Doesn't mean the communication person couldn't work on that project, right? I I just break it down into logo tagline and in visual identity of what we want and voice and tone that we want to provide. Uh a lot of training that uh went to in uh in I C M A was what what? Uh how do we want our voice and tone to be? And that was delivered. Course after course from folks that work in the communications, marketing and their whole branding, so. We really would be starting from uh scratch on this really, and I just think you need somebody to come in and help. I just don't think we have the staffing. That can take that on, so I think as we get into the budget process, you're gonna hear more about that as we. Uh move forward with communication, marketing and the branding. So and I know we didn't make very good progress this last year, but. I feel we can actually make some better progress maybe this next year.
There's some potential funding through, I don't know, through Main Street Sherwood to, might look at for that, that process. But it'll probably be about fifty thousand or so to do it.
I mean, there's a lot of things you could do to engage. Right, like.
Yeah.
Logo design contests, like we may not use it right or taglines, but you get ideas that way.
Alright, you guys changed my mind. That's what we do at this council.
You all did great conversation and important one. I think that is very, I think it's very timely for it, right? I C M A is pretty bad, so many testimonials. So what I'd like was, even though you can't read this, I can, and that is consider marketing branding efforts. And that might be through a consultant separately, it's considered some kind of position for outside, consider some staff resources. To help with community engagement, P I O, in other words, making sure the city is able to create the accurate narrative for whatever's going on, especially in a. Media situation, employee coordination, in other words, in internal communication. And working with different departments on what they're putting out there. And lastly, promoting city marketing branding, once it's complete. They also be the ones to make that a reality. So those would be things we could look for in the budget process.
Uh something not quite on this topic, but I think falls into this deliverable. The planning department currently publishes the. Current developments into the Tiger Times, uh we legally meet the state requirements for doing. The like, you know, notifying the public, but obviously we're not Tiger. Um and so the money's being spent on that to fulfill the requirement, but. Is, can we relook at that to see if there's a better way to engage the community? Just still, and still meet that requirement, I guess.
Like if we legally have to put it in a newspaper and Tiger's the only one around, but how else do we notify our community?
Kinda, yeah.
It used to be on those billboards at Albertson's and different places, do we still do that?
There are places around the city that they're publicly posted as well.
Yeah, that's post office.
You're talking about meeting the letter versus actually getting.
Correct, cause we get, and I know the website will address some of this, but we get so many questions about the development going around and. There's no way people will know if they're really not receiving the the paper.
Well, I think that can feed back into the communications specialists that we hopefully have. I mean, if you look at some of the social media. That Tiger does, they'll inform the community of projects and stuff like that that's coming out. Hey, check this out, we can receive an application for this or. Yeah. This is what's going on with this project and you have someone that really helps coordinate that, that we don't have the time, the expertise.
So, yeah, I've been a loop as part of this, are we gonna? Build around of having our own app or that could feed into the social media.
T V D.
Thank you, you just teed up exactly what I was gonna say, that was. You'll be able to push no notifications out, so um if you have the Sherwood Broadband or Sherwood, Sherwood mobile app. Will push you notifications if you subscribe to those kinds of things and we'll have the ability to push notifications out for just emergencies as well.
Great, should love that. Anything we do to clean people off of social media, I'm on the fast. I just be a broken record.
Talked about was looking at ways we can promote a high level of customer centered approach to citizens where they interact with that included. Again, assistant academy, which obviously, as we know, academies can be time consuming, you have to find a group, but they. Are very good for creating a basket out there, but you do have to have the the energy and the resources to do it. Any quick observations?
Sylvia, I was looking for Sylvia. Um Sylvia and I have been looking at some other cities examples that are, still want to break something back. To have you guys review. I think it'll be very similar to what we did in the past. I've also reached out to the chamber to see if. They want to, might want to help participate in. I also think that there's. I'll, yeah, we've talked about doing it, piecing it out a few different ways. So, our target date is still fall of twenty five.
Awesome.
We did talk a little bit, so last year, great conversation about affecting and surveying our customer service and how to reply those. Seems like you're right in the midst of upgrading your web platform. Seems like you're right in the midst of upgrading your web platform. Some opportunities, that sounds like. Might be worth kind of seeing how that would be all out there and laying down expectations. But are you all okay with kind of the staff approaching?
Yeah, I think it still would stay on the goals, but there's probably some. Then more of. Chat with staff and councils. What kind of surveys do we want? What are we trying to achieve? What answers, you know, that kind of thing.
Then, yes, we talked about, does anyone need a break?
Oh, we're leaving.
I'm gonna have to leave here. I'm trying to hold out.
You tell me. Um, so lastly, we just had a, so looking at applying this organizational lens to diversity equity and food. When operating services and benefits to our students. So one of the ways obviously that Sherwood shows about that with. With the special events that they specifically have and then also within the organizational culture that you develop. But anything else to be, to thank them? We feel like we understand the progress there.
I I don't understand the progress. There's no metric that we're measuring against. We have no idea. Year over year, we're improving this. It's a great value to have in the city, but for me, I don't have any way of tracking what we're actually doing with this.
And it's challenging for staff because we do it with all of our events.
Right, it's it's part of our values.
Somehow gather all this data.
Well, it would be every program that we offer at the art center, the senior center and the library, all of them are accessible.
Yeah, no, I get it.
What's, what are we?
It's like a work session.
I think it talks about a benchmark here and and there's no. Like in the parks and recreation world, there's some, you know, standards and benchmarks you're trying to reach. There's nothing that we haven't decided what that benchmark is and so, you know.
I think intuitively, I think we do a great job.
Yeah.
Love to have a trend line. Last year, what's our, what's our attendance, participation as well, you know. Works.
Thanks. So we will absolutely look to refine that a little bit more than I'll include to explore the standards, maybe KPIs or benchmark that. For that. So beyond just special events, what are other ways that we can make sure that we are applying in organizations?
Maybe we can see what kind of. Reports or benchmarks are surrounded. How are they, how are others measuring this?
It's much like a climate action plan, because like greenwashing, I don't think does it seem good. We just need to have practical pragmatic things that are lifting our staff and our community along these lines.
And the few that I saw was under more of a value.
I was thinking, does it really need to be on the goals rather than just one of our city's values?
Maybe. I I think the goal is to develop the, the metrics.
Yeah.
Not, but.
Yeah, gotcha.
I I think one other thing, and I brought this up in context in the past and various. Do, it feels like sometimes we start up something and then it just runs. Whoever, how well do we do at reassessing like, okay, this, sometimes things just are cyclical, right? Like, we started up a book club. And it was great for three years and then it kind of tailed off. And now we're running it because we've always run it and there's one person that got, bad example, but you get the point I'm trying to make.
That might be part of metrics.
Well, maybe, but that's really in the weeds at a program. Like, I don't know that we would have like. Out of eight thou, we wouldn't be looking at eight hundred and thirty-seven programs and like, but like somebody who's running them, hopefully we, do we have a process where we do some sort of annual or biannual review and say. You know what? This, this seems to have run its course as stale. We either need to modify it to get more engagement or maybe it's just. It's run its course, so we turn it off. And we've, in the meantime, we've started up. Seven new ones, but we never turn anything off, right? Is there, do we do that already?
Yeah, especially over at the art center. After each quarter, each session, we evaluate. And then especially, and there's programs that we phased out. We're just not getting, we look at our attendance, we look at our participation.
Do we do a library?
Yep, absolutely. Yep. Yeah, and if it's not being utilized, then we reprogram it or find something else to do. People have talked about engaging. You've been clearly involved in other advisory board. It looks like you either had the session or you're about to. Yeah, we had a work session scheduled. I mean, I, I believe everybody's on the same page that this is still something that we want to do and that we really want to have the city. Run this program, manage this program. So I'm not even sure if we need to do another work session on it or if you're just ready for us to move forward.
I think we need a work session. The one that got canceled. Yeah.
Just make sure we're all aligned.
We'll put it on February.
Sounds good.
Awesome.
I still, I think I say this every year, I still think it's a great idea. I still am worried again about staff. I'm being able to stop yet another board commission.
Just on, real quick, on two quick things from my side now passing to the bear. So, uh, one is. Is there anything that you think that you missed? I mean, I, it felt very much like we were on topic in the process, like I was early up. So anything else that you want to do? Renee, do you have, I know you have to go. Do you have anything to talk?
No, I I feel good about what transpired today, but I do, I've got to leave one of these.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thanks for moving the timer around.
Yeah, no worries. Take care, guys.
So, your respect for this, normally what I would do and I won't do today is I would summarize kind of where the progress is. If you can trust that all of what I say works with Craig and staff will separate out there, what would be things that were operational, make sure to delete or add things that would be. Put on here, incorporate any new goals, comments that are in here. It will then be brought back to you. So you're gonna have another chance before this is something that's adopted.
I trust your notes and Kristin's notes. It'll all come together.
Yeah. Awesome.
You get better over here.
She's about to say that. Hundred percent. Yeah, no, uh, Jeff, thank you again for coming out. Uh, did a great job. Um. I'm just gonna reiterate, I know I said at the beginning, we just have a great dynamic, great council, great staff, and it really makes these sessions easy and we get a lot of good work done and. And we saw, I saw people's minds change because, you know, as we had these conversations, which was great. So. Um, thank you, everybody. And unless someone else has wants to say anything, I think we're done.
In the back.
That which is in the back.
Somebody takes good care of us.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Good job.
Thank you.
Yes. Hey, I said our key words.